Sorry, we had to make sure we had our recording equipment on. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This will be run by Ms. Keys.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public comments section of our agenda for tonight, Tuesday, June 7th. First person that we have up is Joe Giandurco. If you could please come up, state your full name and address for the record. You will have approximately three minutes, and I'll wave my hand when you have 30 seconds left. Thank you.
Joseph Giandurco, 163 Chestnut Hill Road, Norwalk. Good evening, my name is Joseph Giandurco, and I'm the first vice president of the NFT. I come here tonight to speak on behalf of the middle school students, plans, and teachers who will be impacted by the middle school redesign plan. The past several meetings, I stood before this board, made suggestions, offered ideas, and been ignored. I have attended each of the strategic meetings and listened to parents' raised questions and concerns about the timeline of the redesign, and they were ignored as well. When two-thirds of the stakeholders, teachers and administrators' concerns are dismissed, and the other third, parents, have a limited understanding of the changes you described are being ignored, success will be impossible to achieve. The Board of Education has not acted in a truly transparent and collaborative manner. The timeframe to make these drastic changes to the district middle school has been rushed. To make changes that fundamentally change the way teachers deliver instruction cannot be achieved in such a short time. Teachers require proper professional development, which your own specialist, Dr. Daggett, pointed out. The middle school redesign has not provided this opportunity to teachers. If this plan moves forward, it will put the educational success of students and teachers behind. Teachers are being asked to do more with less and develop new ways to engage students without the proper training. Teachers haven't been engaged in one session of professional development, which lasted for nearly two hours. Team leaders are posed for another session, which took place today. However, this leaves the majority of teachers still lacking the professional development needed to implement the changes this plan calls for. It should also be noted that ELL and special education teachers have received no training at all, despite the fact that they are growing populations across the middle school level. The NFT is not the status quo organization it has been painted by as several board members in the newspaper, digital, and social media. We have worked with the board in the past on several important changes across the district in an attempt to move forward. However, this board has worked to damage that relationship with its most current actions and behavior. It's time to come together, listen to our requests, and create a middle school model which best serves the students. I come here tonight to ask you, the board, to take action and pause this redesign plan. We are not against change, we just want the change to be conducted in a manner which allows success for students and teachers. We seek the time needed to examine and prepare for scheduling conflicts, class size orgies, redeployment of resources, and, most importantly, the professional development we need. My NFT brothers and sisters are here behind me tonight in support of this request. I know you can hear me, however, I have to ask, are you listening? Please take the time to think and analyze the redesign plan that you have put forward and allow us all to come back together and make a better plan which will achieve the goal of student success and learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up for a public comments is Mary Jordan.
Good evening, thank you. We have had a year of really big-
Can you address your-
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Jordan, 9 Mott Avenue, Norwalk.
Thank you.
I'm the NFT president. We've had a year of big program decisions, changes made out of the blue, decisions quietly being made at central office with no input from teaching staff, and in some cases, no input from building administrators either. Dual language program expansion, block scheduling in the middle schools, block scheduling in the elementary schools, complete demolition of, proposed, of a vibrant jewel of a preschool program. We've had principals, administrators, and central office staff entering and leaving their positions with no announcements by email or website. The lack of communication in this district and the lack of collaboration silences our professional voices. It erodes trust in the leadership of the district. If you want successful change to achieve this vision in the strategic operating plan, the teachers want to achieve the vision in the strategic operating plan. This will require true leadership with good communication. I fear that Dr. Adamowski's current management style will get in the way of progress on these goals. For example, Goal 1, letter H, page 7, adding 300 hours of instruction to underperforming schools. It's a really exciting strategy, I'd love to be able to support it. This is a handbook for districts and unions that describes exactly how it was done, precisely in the town of Meriden. It's called "It's About Time." It was done with the help of the National Center for Teaching and Time in Learning, and it describes, above all, the importance of well-established relationships, relationships of trust, partnerships, and collaboration. But we are not anywhere close to that in this district. And I want to be clear, teachers are not resisting change in this district. System-wide, we are piloting or implementing, just to name a few, PBIS for school culture, student-based budgeting, online grade books, Power School Student Information Systems, school governance councils, NWEA testing, school quality reviews, special education restructuring, SRBI initiatives, PSYOP training for ELL, English Language Learner Instruction. We've got coming new K-5 English Language Arts and Math curriculum, middle school read and Math 180, Teach2One, new social studies curriculum and world language resources. Also, high school block scheduling, International Baccalaureate, Norwalk Early College Academy, and Medical and Arts Academies. We aren't blocking this change, we're behind the change. We are leading some of these changes. Our students deserve better, we're not working on the kind of relationships that will lead to the successful transformation, oh, this one, of the most successful city-school system in Connecticut. We embrace that vision, we will need good leadership, we will need good communication to achieve that vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have up is John Mosby.
Good evening, tonight, board. My name is John Mosby, 10 Addison Avenue. I'm gonna be very brief tonight. I will feel that the public in the community should have in the booklet a service of the employers. It seems like when we get the package, we never see the service or nothing, it's always done in the background. These, in the past years, I wish it were 33 years, they always showed it to the public. Number two, another thing what I don't like is the way the teachers and the principals are being treated. When we go into the school where there's now, we don't have nowhere to go. They look like they're afraid, they won't talk to us, and this is not no way you run a system. Number three, this is a family handbook we had out by, Dr. Mark gave us one for all the parents and students and family, with all the rules and everything. Right here, she done it when she was here, when Dr. Verle left, he did it for all the family, we have it for us, what we can do. We supposed to have the human rights thing, we supposed to have all the policy and everything. All of this is gone. This is gone. I don't understand what's wrong, where do we go when we have a problem? Look at here, the mission, discrimination, goal, everything is here. Who give you all the right to take this book and throw it out? The public got a right to know, the parents, the grandparents. And what you all are doing, you running this system in the ground. All the groups getting together, the parents, the teachers, nobody have much to do with it. You getting state and fellow money, head start money. You are violating every law in Connecticut, all over this country. And I don't understand why these people allow you all to do this. Fellow laws over head start supersede state law, and it say that parents have to be involved. So I wanna say to you both, what's wrong with you all? You all are responsible. And Dr. Ness, I'm not against you, but sir, you all don't meet with us. We wanna be a part of this, and we wanna help y'all. The poor teacher, they got a right. Brookside to get rid of the teacher, they some good teacher. Special Ed, y'all spending $11 million on Special Ed when you could bring these kids and pick up these schools and put them back here. What's wrong with you both, remember? What you all doing are wrong, we have to speak out on it, just for all the people. The northern, blacks, whites, Hispanics, everybody. What you all doing, you all going crazy in this, it's just money. Everybody want money. You don't care, we need school. You don't let us know where they are schooled. You all got to slow down and listen to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends our public comments section for this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to the action items. Item one is West Rock's exterior window and door replacement project, which has three sub-elements. Approval of preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications. B is approval of filing the school building grant application with the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, Office of School Construction. C is approval of educational specifications. Mr. Hamilton, please bring us up to speed on this project.
Sure. This was a project that was funded in the capital budget for fiscal '16-'17, and as I've indicated in the memo I provided to you, it is my recommendation that we proceed forward with filing a school building application for this project. As you may know, as you recall, the school facilities assessment did recommend a renovate-as-new project for West Rock's. At this point, you know, obviously, we expect that renovation-as-new project to happen at some point in the 10-year life cycle of the facilities assessment plan, but I think it's still some time before we would likely get to that renovate-as-new project at West Rock's, because there are a number of other projects that have also been recommended that are likely to be in front of a renovate-as-new project at West Rock's. So in the meantime, we know that the windows at West Rock's are in a seriously deteriorated condition, they need to be replaced, they were identified as really the highest priority at West Rock's in the facility study, and so we think it makes sense to go forward with the West Rock's project as a standalone project. So when a renovate-as-new project ultimately is undertaken there, the windows will just have already been completed. So again, the action items we've identified here, the first one is authorizing the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications, and forwarding to the Norwalk Common Council for their approval. We've actually are simultaneously moving this through the city process, and I believe it's gone to the Norwalk Facilities Construction Commission, and is due to go to the Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Common Council soon, and then get authorized by the council. The second item we're asking is authorization to file this school building grant application with the State of Connecticut. And the third is to approve the educational specifications for the West Rock's exterior window and door replacement project. And that last item is one that is solely within the province of the Board of Education, so the educational specifications do not go to the council for approval, but they do require your approval. All three of these things need to happen by June 30th in order for us to put the application in with the State of Connecticut this year. The expectation is it would get in the hopper, and this is a project that we would then start on design work soon, with the intention of doing the actual window replacement next summer, summer of 2017.
Okay. And the application deadline to get this into the state is June 30th, this month, right?
That's correct.
All right. Any questions?
There's gonna be a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve, I think we can do all three actions simultaneously, so moved, second, moved by Mr. Kessimus and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Make sure I get that on the tape. Oh, the secretary's here, yes, good. So is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please indicate. And that is approved unanimously, thank you. Second item is authorize the execution of one-year contract with Whitson's Food Service Corporation for '16-'17 school year in the amount not to exceed $215,670.
Okay, I will take that as well, although I believe that Karen Bartron is here, as well as our food service director is here, if there are any detailed questions. The district put the food service contract out to bid again this year at the, basically on the requirement of the Connecticut Department of Education, required all the communities or all the districts that had contracted service providers to put those out to bid again, so we did. We only received one response, which was from our incumbent provider, Whitson's. As you know, we do have a rather unique arrangement in that we contract just for management services, so that's the reason why the contract value is relatively small at $215,670, because Whitson's is providing just the oversight and management of the program, not the employees and other expenses of running the program. So our district is sort of unique in having neither a fully contracted-out operation nor a fully in-house operation. So we are looking at whether or not we want to consider any other alternatives over the course of, you know, the next few years, but for the time being, we do obviously want to keep the existing operation in place and food services up and running, and so we've recommended the authorization for the superintendent to execute a one-year contract as we continue to evaluate our options going forward.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kessimus. Yeah, I will note that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on the board about doing something to improve the overall quality and healthiness of the food that we supply in the schools. There's actually some additional information that may get worked into the strategic plan along those lines. So personally, I think a one-year extension makes sense, it's not locking us into a five-year commitment or something, it gives us the opportunity to revisit this in a reasonable period of time. If there's no other comments, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate, and that is unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Tom, thank you. All right, we are now going to go into the workshop session of the meeting, which is going to be a review of the draft strategic operating plan, and at the end of the meeting, we have approval of the proposed principles for Brookside, Jefferson, and Narromake. So for review of draft strategic operating plan, over to you, Dr. Adamowski.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. So there's a new document in front of you, which looks like this. I wanted to, I want to thank Brenda Williams for her work on this. This document reflects two forms of revision. One was to try to get the document in a format that was much simpler and easier for the public and parents, as well as educators, to understand. And so you will recall at a couple of the town hall meetings that we had, we had comments from people who said, you know, it's too complicated, there's too much jargon, educators may know what you're talking about, but the general public would not. And so Brenda went through this, tried to simplify it, tried to take out jargon, and shorten it up a little bit, so it was much more understandable. Second, based upon all the notes that were taken, and, you know, we had some 20 meetings on this, and as you know, five of them were town hall meetings, but there were another 15 sessions that were specific to different stakeholder groups, and we had three sessions for staff at the elementary, middle, high school level, and so on. And she tried to capture next to each goal at least one of the major areas of input that was received, or a theme that was expressed or discussed during that period of time. So as you go through next to each goal, you'll see these little kind of thought boxes that attempt to capture that. In addition to that, there were also adjustments made in the wording of a number of the strategies based upon the input received, and some of these convey a different emphasis, or broader approach, or inability to consider other options that may not have been considered at the time this was drafted in November. Now, having said that, you know, as the board looks at this, you received this on Friday, the hope tonight is that we would be able to cover a couple of the hot-button issues that have been of greatest concern and expressed to you, and then also to discuss anything, any specific strategies in this that a board member wanted to discuss, that where they felt, based upon the forums you attended, you know, that you would want to explore it further. I want to, you know, thank, first of all, thank the board for your participation in these forums. I think every board member attended at least two of these, and, you know, they were helpful in terms of providing the public with an opportunity to talk about these things. Also helpful to us in terms of being able to think about it, because every time we talk about this, I think ideas become more refined, people contribute to them further, and we get better at stating this. Now, in terms of the, in terms of the hot-button issues, we have middle school redesign, and I asked Dr. Connor if he would give you an update. Ms. Keys and Mr. Barbis have been very much in the loop on this, being, having participated in the work of the group, but if he would give you an update on exactly what may occur at each school next year. And again, this is a three-year process, there is a, you know, a hope that some things can be tried in this next year. You're aware from the results of our, from our achievement results, that sixth grade is the priority here, given the lowest level of achievement and the dive in achievement from sixth grade, so, you know, obviously, we're going to do some things, they have to, there has to be a greater focus on grade six. But essentially, these are baby steps, and they're baby steps to get us started, positioned, be able to expand the things that are most successful, but to continue working on broader aspects of the design over a three-year period of time. Second hot-button issue has been preschool, particularly in the Brookside, in the Brookside example and situation. And so we actually had a request from the board for Dr. Connor to share some of the data that we have, the PELI data that we have on preschool, and also to provide some information on what exactly is the LE model. You know, we're great at using these acronyms, right? What is the definition of it, what does it look like, and, you know, why is this a model that throughout our state is gaining such traction in terms of early literacy? So I don't know if you want to start with board, the issues board members want to discuss further, or you want us to get right into the two issues that we've identified.
I think those two are a good place to start.
Sounds like a good place to start.
Okay. All right, Dr. Connor.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Adamowski.
And I should just say at the onset, Dr. Connor took on, at my request, the very difficult and unpopular job of leading the middle school redesign effort. Our middle schools have basically had the same model for the past 15 or 20 years. Change is not easy, we do need time in order to make changes that are meaningful and important and better than what we're currently doing, but we also have to be, we also have to be guided by some sense of urgency regarding the results that our students are having in terms of their academic trajectory. So let me start by thanking you for doing this, I know you've invested a tremendous amount of time in it, as have many others, and as have all the members of the Middle School Redesign Committee. That kind of heavy lifting is now being done in schools, who are attempting to implement a new block schedule or do something different in one of the academic areas. But I think it would be helpful tonight for you just to review by school, what are some of the things that are going to be worked on for the next school year?
Absolutely. And first, I want to thank Ms. Heidi Keys, as well as Mr. Michael Barbis, for actively participating on the district committee, as well as our parents, principals, and teachers since the committee charge. And our committee charge started on March 24th, 2016, and before I get into the actual plans of each school, I want to highlight the district accomplishments, as well as the Norwalk Public Schools' accomplishments. First, examining three major, large-scale research studies that have been used across America. We have examined the opportunity-to-learn study that was conducted by James Madison University, the Hanover Research Project on Effective Middle Schools, as well as the conceptual framework of rigor relevance of relationships from Dr. Daggett. This material is very dense, heavy with educational jargon, as well as a lot of statistical data, but our team was able to synthesize that, gather that information, and make sense or meaning of what that looks like in the context of Norwalk Public Schools. Also, we had a team go up to Hartford, Connecticut to visit the Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy, one of the models or pillars for secondary education, or six-to-eight education, in the context of extended learning time, in the context of encore program, as well as flexible scheduling that's embedded with teacher teaming. It's just a litany of different design elements that we're looking to actually implement within the next three years here in Norwalk Public Schools. Also, the team, in conjunction with the Center for Secondary School Redesign, have developed site-based and universal communication plans, so we can improve the communication, as well as transparency and collaboration. Also, the engagement of the Center for Secondary School Redesign, where they actually went to the sites, worked with each site-based team, worked with each principal, in the context of developing and deepening their plan as well. So since March 24th, we've been very active, whether it be site-based support or more in the lines of district-based support. So we've made tremendous progress with this. NPS accomplishments, all of our schools have adopted school-based plans that are aligned to the opportunity-to-learn study, as well as from the National Center for Time in Learning. Two of the key proponents or variables to increase student achievement comprehensively, one, opportunity to learn, i.e. the quality of pedagogy that's within all of our classrooms, and two, increasing the number of minutes within time for core instruction. Also, too, our instructional leaders, i.e. our principals, participated in multiple leadership, professional learning opportunities around the multi-tier system of support. That is our tier-one, tier-two, tier-three instruction, i.e. Read 180, Systems 44, as well as Math 180. I think our team, I want to thank Ms. Diane Filardo, Ms. Kathy Orgavon, Mr. Ralph Balanzisi, as well as the assessment team, they have identified, based on three different metrics, every student that's matriculating into grades five through nine, excuse me, matriculating to grades six through nine, have identified what intervention they will need, what that support will look like, and how that support will be scheduled into each middle school. This was a very arduous task, large-scale task, and I want to thank my team for that. So each principal, as well as school counselors, received that information last week, as well as this week, for Math 180, Read 180, and what those interventions will look like. I also want to thank Ms. Patty Foley, as well as Mr. Costanzo. We were able to utilize alliance funds, no funds that are coming out of the local budget, to be able to support our interventions, as well as innovations, through the middle school redesign. Also, Read 180, Systems 44, Math 180, professional development for our site-based interventionists, that has started and will continue. There's going to be a copious focus on job-invented professional learning. We will be very intentional on our learning design, in the context of our teachers, and how to be able to support our teachers in class. In lieu of pulling them out, we're going to go into the classroom, provide model sessions, provide debriefing sessions, as well as, more importantly, being able to analyze data to concrete identify what will be the targeted instructional practices, as well as pedagogy that's necessary to raise achievement in an accelerated manner. Also, HMH, as well as the International Center for Leadership and Education, will be providing a program director, and this program director will be onsite within Norwalk Public Schools four days a week to provide that intense support and job-invented coaching. So it's not just going to be Norwalk Public Schools acting in isolation, but also working in partnership with our program director to be able to target specific supports for our teachers. Also, our team and teacher leaders started their professional learning series on common planning time and extended learning time. The key is how are we going to build lateral capacity to be able to support our practitioners? This is not just going to be a didactical approach, where NPS leaders, as well as instructional specialists, are providing that professional development, but the highest turn for, to increase achievement, is a peer-to-peer coaching model, and that's what we want to do, build capacity in the context of the interventions, in the context of pedagogy, where teachers are supporting teachers as well. Now for our organizational structures, what are schools going to be- What are schools going to be doing next year? And again, I want to be able to thank the teams, our principals, our teachers have worked very hard to be able to identify this. For Rothen Middle School, they have interdisciplinary teams in grades six through eight. And the interdisciplinary teams are the four-man teams, three-man teams, two-man teams that you might have heard of. Also, vertical student cohorts. Instead of looking at grade six in a horizontal manner as a 200-student cohort, we have divided those two cohorts into two teams, where the cohorts are 100 apiece. So, if we're looking at that in the context where now, we're really expanding on the relevancy and the relationship aspect for our students. Read 180, Systems 44, and Math 180 interventions will be implemented. Also, Mr. Volucci, we have a meeting with Mr. Anthony Allison, who's the executive director of Norwalk Act. Hartford Middle Trinity College Academy has one of the best encore programs nationally. Ms. Biggs, who's a principal, Sally Biggs, the principal of the school, has offered her support in helping us implement this. Anthony Allison is looking for community partnerships, where we're looking at different, it could be student-based activities based on their interest and class, core classes that they could participate in. Some examples would be sports science classes, dance classes, robotics. So, Mr. Volucci is looking to implement that in grade six and expand that in the subsequent years. Also, Mr. Volucci is creating a Global Studies and STEM Pathways, which leads into the Brian McMahon Center for Global Studies, as well as the Project Lead the Way pathway that's created at Brian McMahon High School, and also with the IB implementation with that. So, students are going to be able to explore in grade six foreign languages, as well as different sciences. By grade seven, they would actually choose their pathway. This is correlated to our student success plans and the Naviance implementation that the state has developed. Also, structure common planning time, which will be a core focus on analyzing data, professional development, as well as teachers working in teams to be able to come up with common goals to increase achievement. Nathan Hale Middle School.
Mike, before you go into Nathan Hale, I just want to give the board a chance to reflect after each one if they have questions. But also, in terms of Rothen, you, when you look at that, you probably think it's fairly familiar. And it should be, because Rothen, being the smallest of the three middle schools, has had a kind of a flexible schedule of smaller groups of students that is much closer to the national best middle school practice. So, Rothen is probably further out ahead on this, just by virtue of its, its past experience and not having to adapt very much. But if you, if you look at the Read 180 and Math 180, this is a fairly big deal across the system, because our students have not had that support. So, we have sent students from fifth to sixth grade who are not reading on grade level. But they have not had a system of support in grade six. And that's the Read 180, and that's the Math 180. We think that is going to do a lot to change that flat trajectory in seventh and eighth. So, this is a very, very important investment, I think, on the, on the part of our school system.
And the Read 180 and Math 180 programs are a combination of curricular materials and technology and...
Correct. So, it's an adaptive intelligence software that is adaptive to meet the student at their specific needs. And then the teacher would use a small-group instructional approach, whereas on a rotational base. So, for Read 180, they use a stationary rotation, where there's three different rotations, where the student will go to the intelligent software, couple that with whether it be a project-based activity, and then get or receive specific skills-based instruction on skills that there's a proven gap with that. Our program director that we're going to have is going to support the teachers in analyzing that data, to be able to intensify, as well as provide intentional, intentional instruction around the gap areas as well. So, we're going to be using the data from the actual platform that is, that's embedded within Read 180, to be able to identify what are some of the skill gap areas that we have to be able to address.
The, the research suggests that, under ideal circumstances, a student can gain up to two years in reading level, in one year, in Read 180.
Correct.
It requires very highly-trained teachers. Fortunately, we have some. Unfortunately, we've had others who have stepped up to be trained. But this is, this is what is called a structural support. In other words, it's simply part of the middle school program. And those students who need it get the structural support they need in order to, to be much further in the mainstream than they would have otherwise.
Okay. Question?
Any other questions?
Start it.
Yeah, my question is on headcount. Are we going to need more teachers, less teachers, or the same to implement that?
Well, we already identified the interventionist for each school, and the interventionists are being paid out of the Priority School District funding that's provided from the state. So, right now, looking at it in the context, we met with every principal, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Costanzo, and myself, we identified what were the priorities based on their specific plan, and what would be the necessary capacity, as well as practitioners needed, to be able to support this. So, I want to give credit to Mr. Hamilton, as well as Mr. Costanzo, as we met with principals at least two to three times, to ensure that they have the support at their school, in the context of teachers, to be able to implement this. So, yes, they...
So, yes, more or less?
No, they do. Absolutely.
We have enough.
We have enough. Absolutely.
Yeah, so, if you look at, you know, one of the questions here is, is how can you offer 90 minutes of math?
Yeah.
And how can you offer 90 minutes of reading?
Correct.
That's why you need the block schedule. It cannot be done without scheduling. Because right now, in the few cases where we do it, or in the cases where we do it, we add it on to the, to the regular schedule.
Exactly.
So, you know, we're not going to save money on this. We're going to have more time in instruction, we're going to have more opportunity to learn, and hopefully, higher achievement.
And in some cases, already, too, Dr. Adamowski facilitated that we add a teacher at a certain, at specific schools.
Thank you.
Now, from a board policy perspective, this relates to something I've talked to you about several times. And this is our capacity to be able to use our grant funds, our Priority District funds, our Title I funds, our alliance funds, to support these kinds of interventions. And so, you, you see, this year, we have our really, first real ability to do that as a result of some of the budget shifts we were able to accomplish in this, in this past year.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes?
Thank you. The, Dr. Connor, the encore program in grade six, I was trying to go through everything you have. There's a whole lot of information squeezed in there.
Absolutely.
So, I had two questions. One was on encore program, and what that exactly looks like. And also, as far as the Global Studies and STEM Pathways, what does that look like as far as, you know, integrating it in with the current curriculum? And what is that going to be like? Is that going to be additional training for teachers? Or, so, those two fronts, I'd just like to have a little bit more discussion on.
Absolutely. So, the encore program is an interest-based course selection. So, Mr. Volucci, right now, is working with his team to be able to gather the interest of the incoming sixth graders at the respective elementary schools, to be able to identify what are these courses going to look like. So, as an example, on a Wednesday, because the schedules are flexible, he might decrease his normal schedule, which might be 90 minutes for per block. For Wednesday, and I'm just using this in a hypothetical situation, it might go down to 80 minutes, where each period would be 80 minutes, but that last period would be a 50 to 60-minute period, again, I'm being hypothetical, where it'll be encore. Those sixth-grade students will go into classes like robotics, dancing, cooking, anything that's interest-based, that the students have generated based off of that data. And then now, with our meeting with Norwalk Act, we're going to be able to solicit those community partners to be able to come into the schools and provide that support.
So, just to follow up on that really quickly, these would be outside, these would, these wouldn't be teachers from the district, would they?
They would, in many cases, yes.
So, we would be having teachers teaching additional courses at, just, at the, at the decisioning of the student bodies coming in?
So, if you look at most of these throughout the country, they're a combination of teacher-led classes, if a person has a particular interest, or even, even hobby, or a particular skill, and outside agencies that might come in and, you know, offer a yoga class, let's say, or something of that nature. So, it's generally a combination. And I don't, I, we don't want to imply in any way that what would be happening at Rothen next year is a full-fledged encore program. It's not. It's a little bit, and it's, it's a baby step. But underlying the developmental needs of the trans-adolescent, psychologists tell us that this is the stage of life where students form their worldview. And what that means is, they figure out what they're good at, what they like, what they don't like, what they think they can, their strengths are, and what they would be interested in, in the future. And that's why exploration, the ability to try things, is considered one of the most fundamental aspects of a good middle school program. Now, we really have not, in Norwalk, done anything with that. But if you go to most model middle schools, or middle schools that are considered models, they will have a exploratory period program, and some of them call it encore, because there should be a relationship with the core, with every core subject, with the encore activities. You know, they just don't exist in and of themselves. They exist because they're a hands-on implementation of something in the core. So, you know, our, our ability to get some experience with this at Rothen is going to be a very good thing, because, you know, this really is something that, you know, experts tell us should be in every single middle school.
Okay. And thank you, Dr. Adamowski. And as far as the Global Studies and STEM Pathway, that bullet point, a little bit more discussion if I could.
So, the Global Studies is expanding the world language, or foreign languages at Rothen. I know Mike Barbis have been really advocating for keeping the Chinese teacher there. So, Dr. Adamowski, as well as Tom Hamilton, was able to work that out. So, we're looking to expand the foreign language offerings at Rothen. So, in the context of training, of course, there'll be additional training in that regard, but it's also keeping the same practitioners there, but looking at how we can be able to expand by hiring more practitioners, obviously, in the subsequent years, to be able to support the foreign language offers, offerings, and expand it as much as we can.
And particularly in these language areas, like Japanese and Chinese, you know, our capacity to be able to share staff between Rothen and Brian McMahon, and PONUS. PONUS is the other feeder, which you'll, you'll see when we come to that, you know, is going to be very, very helpful. And it's possible that, you know, a student could actually study with a teacher in that language for, you know, a couple of years.
And the STEM Pathway is aligned to the Brian McMahon feeder. So, as an example, Mr. Volucci has identified a teacher to be able to attend a professional development, professional learning workshop in upstate New York, to be able to implement what they call, I believe it's called the medical models. I don't know the specific name, but it's aligned to the medical PTEC that we're going to be implementing at Brian McMahon High School. So, with that STEM focus, we're going to continue to expand on the alignment to the Project Lead the Way, as well as to the medical PTEC that we will be implementing there. So, we do have a teacher that will be attending a training this summer, out of our science department that was paid for. And she will be going and then implementing the actual resources and materials that she will be receiving from that training upstate in New York.
Thank you, Dr. Connor. And specifically on the, the language enhancements, has this been identified? I mean, exactly what will be offered? And has there been discussion with, with the staff that would be taking on those responsibilities? I'm just, just a little curious, because, I mean, this is a few months away.
Well, we're only going to expand in Chinese next year.
Okay.
We're looking at other languages to expand upon. Mr. Volucci has had many conversations with his teachers in regards to what are going to be the design elements that he will be implementing, or as well as the school will be implementing with that. We did give the schools autonomy in regards to what would be the specific design elements that each school will be focused on. So, there is a uniqueness to this, and also, Mr. Volucci has had continuous conversations with that.
So, we, we have the teachers currently.
Thank you.
And it would be PONUS and Rothen mirroring the languages that are available at Global Studies.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. So, just, just again, for clarification, there aren't going to be any additional language offerings in the 16, 17-year? This is going to be a part of the three-year ongoing plan?
Absolutely, yes.
To continue to expand upon this?
Yes, we're looking to expand upon the actual program.
Over the next three?
Over the next three years, yes.
So, next year, basically, all the bullet points that we just went over are minor, in, in the district's opinion, a minor changes to get a feel, to see if it will work. Now, what if, for instance, this isn't something that we can move in that direction of? Is there a plan to just, is it, would it just be pulled back? Or, I mean, it...
Well, I think it's going to determine, to a large degree, by student interest and family interest. You know, will these language classes load in terms of students choosing them, or, or not? And what languages do students choose? So, it would like to have a situation where they will gravitate from some of the traditional choices to some of the new languages that are, again, are reflected in the direction that the high school programs are taking. But again, I don't, I don't think we'll know until we get some experience with this. How do you build a cohort? You know, generally, you start with the, with the Level 1, and have students who enjoy it, are interested in it, and want the, the next level.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Posty.
Yeah. Can you send, I guess, the board some names of some schools that have this program, so we can see how successful they are, so we can get a better understanding of the program?
The, the encore program?
Yeah. Because you were just telling him that there's a couple out there, so just, and then, can you send the board this PowerPoint slide?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, writing all this and that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that would be great.
We'll make sure all the presentations get out.
You know, that way, it gives us a, you know, where we can go in and see the model in place, and we can read on it and everything and see, you know.
Absolutely.
Ms. Keys, can you just elaborate on the encore when we visit with the...
It's great. I mean, I really, both Mike Barbis and I went very impressed with the whole school and how they operated. But many of the teachers that we spoke to were doing the encore program as something extra, but they found a passion, whether it was ballet, whatever it may be, woodworking, but they had that passion, and they wanted to instill that in the students there. So, it was very successful. When we went to visit, it was a highly-successful program that we saw firsthand.
What school was that?
It was Hartford Trinity, Aga Program. Yes.
So, a quick follow-up to actually to that, Ms. Keys. And I don't know if you or Dr. Adamowski or Dr. Connor know this. How long has that school been instituting encore?
I don't know exactly how long. I know it's been...
And the reason I ask that question is, is I, I'd be curious to see how they started, and how they made it so successful. I mean, I understand that they're in a successful place right now, but I'd be curious to see what their plan was in implementing that.
I remember, if I could just add, if you don't mind, Dr. Adamowski.
Yes, of course.
I remember speaking to the principal about this whole program, and what they have, and how they've been so successful in closing the achievement gap. But I remember her specifically saying, "It took baby steps." I mean, it took some time to get this up and going, and making it the successful school that it is today, but it did take some time. I don't know how many years, Eric, to answer your question, but I know that she did say it did take steps, and it did take time to make it successful.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keys. I, I would advocate that we would hopefully be able to, as we're beginning to do these testing baby steps, so to speak, over the next year, that I think it would be a huge benefit to this board to have dialogues with the communities that are successfully, successfully implementing a number of these. Getting their input, seeing where their struggles were, seeing where their successes were, seeing how they got from point A to point B. You know, I'm somebody that I, I am excited by a number of these things on here. I want them to be successful. So, if we see them being successful elsewhere, that happened for a reason. You know, I, I love the, the fact that the achievement gap is being benefited by these programs. I want to see that here in Norwalk, but I don't want to see it be a failed effort. So, we obviously have many obstacles to come over on a number of levels, and I want to make sure that we have the most ammunition, so to speak, to successfully do this, to work with our parents, to work with our teachers, to work with our administrators. And I think that that would be a huge benefit for us, not just to say, "Hey, here's this school that's doing great with it," but really understand for us how they got there, and perhaps even having discussions with the boards that helped implement these. So, I, I, for one, would love to be able to have that, because I want these to be successful. I don't want this to be something that is tried and then given away.
Okay. Any other questions? Start it.
Quick question. Is the, the success of the encore program dependent on a partnership with an external group?
No. It, it can be implemented by the teachers. It will enhance the community relationship with the Norwalk Public Schools if we establish those partnerships. That's one of the research elements that Dr. Daggett had posed in his research around relationships, building external relationships with partners.
I think in the school that was visited, correct me if I'm wrong, every... I think in the school that was visited, correct me if I'm wrong, every teacher taught an Encore class. However, they also had community agencies that offered things. And the combination of both multiplied the offerings. So, you had many more offerings, and the groups were smaller. So, you could have six or seven kids doing something with a teacher or a community agency, and they might have three or four choices or modules per year. See, this is all about choice and exploration. And then, you know, as you go up in the grades, your choice is narrow, as you, you have a better sense of what you like, and what you think you're good at, and would like to, to pursue. But, you know, it, it seems like the, the value of this is having a lot of choices, utilizing both the, the staff and their expertise and outside agencies, and getting the, the group numbers down as small as possible, and having as many choices as possible.
I think having the community partnerships are, I know that you just mentioned that, but I think it's really critical that we have that.
I agree.
The more community partners we have, the more successful stories that we'll have, and also, teachers that have a passion to teach something, and relaying that to the students they have. But in Hartford, they had that. They had many, many community partners that they're working with.
Absolutely.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Connors.
Awesome, go ahead.
You go right ahead.
So, when we met with the students, and we interviewed the students, and one of the most compelling or resonating theme from our interviews was that the reason why students were coming to school was because of the Encore program.
One thing I just had a question on specifically on the Norwalk Acts piece, in, in implementing it here in Norwalk. What specifically, I guess, would they be bringing to the table on this? The only reason I ask that is because we, we've already discussed, you know, teachers being able to teach these things, and also being able to have community partnerships. I, perhaps, maybe I'm a little idealistic on this, but would think that the school governance councils could also act in a resource for this as well, if we were looking to have Encore, to find ways to bring community partners in. I, I guess, I'm just curious as to Norwalk Acts' true role in this.
Well, the, the answer is, we don't know.
Oh.
They've expressed an interest in supporting this. Now, this is an organization of 60 members, right? But, you know, their exploration is going to be around what various members could do. You know, ours has to be around, how does this reinforce the core curriculum? And, you know, is it something that is, is worthwhile for our students? And I think your point on the school governance councils is an excellent one, because an effective school governance council could, in fact, be the entity in charge of determining the offerings.
And this is the last question I promised on Roten. Are we losing any programs with the addition of Encore and the structural changes with the Global Studies and STEM pathways? Are any courses being reduced? Are we losing any programs at Roten? Sorry.
I, I think, I think we're enhancing programs, not losing programs.
And why do you say that?
Thank you.
In regards to Global Studies, in regards to the STEM, in regards to now the multiple offerings with the Encore program, I feel that we're providing more choice and more opportunities for students.
And I appreciate that, and I, I don't disagree with you necessarily, but it didn't answer the question, are there any courses being removed?
There are some cuts that are, that did happen at Roten. Specifically, I would have to go back and look at, what are the specifics in regards to what is being cut? But I know that each school did experience some reductions.
And I do, I do hear some comments from the, from the audience, so I would really appreciate knowing those, and seeing how those will be affecting the, the school, because honestly, if, if we're losing a core of curriculum as an elective there, perhaps that should be something that we are focusing on enhancing with Encore. But again, I would love to know what those cuts are.
I'll provide it for you.
I appreciate it, Dr. Connor.
So, when you get the, the budget, Tom is, you know, finalizing this now, but when you get the budget on the 20th, it will include the school budgets, which you did not have previously when you, you know, approved the, the budget structure? And you'll see, you'll see a chart of ins and outs. It's relatively minor, but you can track, you know, anything that was added versus anything that was not, or was deleted.
I mean, just a little, like, questionnaire.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Nathan Hale, you will see very similar design elements being implemented, but what I'm very excited about is Nathan Hale's implementation of the Teach to One model in grade six. And this is a new innovative personalized math program that adjusts, adjusts the actual instructional program for the students each day based on an exit ticket. There are several different small group contexts that students will be engaging in, based on their learning profile, as well as their learning modality. So, you will see, let's hypothetically say that student A would be in a direct instruction component of it on day one. Based off of his or her exit slip, he might be in a performance-based task, or a small group collaboration in day two. So, again, this is truly personalized on the actual acceleration or the growth of the students, based on specific concepts. So, I'm very happy to say that Dalio Foundation has supported this, will support this as well, the Teach to One, they want to see this work in the Norwalk Public Schools. So, we're looking at Nathan Hale being a model for this. Also, the flexible schedules, very excited about that. Where now, even though there might be an actual bell time for students, in the context of, let's say, at the conclusion of 80 or 90 minutes within their actual block, teachers, based off of the principle, can be able to expand that period, if needed be, based on how the students are progressing through that. So, looking for those, looking forward to those two design elements as well. You'll see a combination block being implemented, as well as the Read 180 and Systems 44 in grades six through eight, and then the Math 180 will be implemented in seventh and eighth grade. Reason why Math 180 is not being implemented in grade six is because the Teach to One model is a personalized program for each student. So, they'll provide the intervention, as well as the targeted instruction for them as well.
The big exciting thing here is the Teach to One math in grade six. Hale is the only school that will be doing that. This is an expensive model. However, as it's been tested nationally, it has gotten incredible results. And as Dr. Connor said, this is individualized instruction, essentially, in math. So, it takes our concept of Tier One, Tier Two, and Three to another level. Multi-tiers, based upon each student's particular need. This is something I'm excited about as well, and I, I will share with you that today, I was notified by Andrew Ferguson of the Dalio Foundation's award to us for this. And we had got the official notification today, and Ralph, thank you for all you, you did in this regard. You may recall that when the CSID grant did not go well, they, and they froze that grant, we had 200, there was 200,000 left over, okay? So, they've taken that 200,000, and then they've made two other separate awards, one of 50,000 and one of 250,000, to provide us with 500,000 to implement the Teach to One. We will be spending a couple hundred thousand ourselves, from our Alliance Building Grant, to create this lab, which, which has to be, which involves several classrooms. We will have a integrated push-in special ed teacher with the four math teachers, and then there's also an aide. So, it's a, it's a team of six staffing the lab at, at all times. But this is, this is, in my view, probably, when you look at our math results and the need for it to improve, to have students in a 90-minute lab program like this is probably the most exciting aspect of middle school redesign. And we will, you know, pay very close attention to this, monitor it very closely. Our hope is that we will get the same results as others have, have achieved from it, and that, over a period of time, this may be a five-year period of time, that each of our, our middle schools could have this state-of-the-art approach to math instruction.
Shirley, and then Eric.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, if this is successful, will it be implemented in all the other middle schools? Because I'm trying to see where there's going to be a consistency between these different schools, because if you're at, let's say, Roten, and you moved, and, you know, three years from now, or two years from now, to the area of PONUS or West Rocks, and each one have, you know, different, I'm looking at different themes and everything, I'm just trying to figure out how, will, will that connect? Because a child is going into a school that, you know, is not familiar with what's being offered at the school that, that they're leaving, so.
Well, there's several parts of this that should be universal. Student time and instruction, opportunity to learn, you know, approach, innovative approaches, like Teach to One in math instruction. There, there is, though, a considerable amount of parent support around, and through the school governance councils, for schools developing thematically in certain areas, particularly those that match their feeder pattern. And so, I think we, we're going to leave that to the school governance councils, in terms of the intensity of that. The theme is not necessarily associated with any research on middle school design. That's more a community preference, where, you know, the things that Dr. Connor has talked to you about, in terms of this, the structural supports, the Teach to One, the greater amount of time in, in reading and math, I mean, those are things that should be universal, where there's a research base, even, even the Encore program, that shows that if you do these things, you know, students achieve at a higher level, and they're happier.
Eric?
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski, Dr. Connor, again. And actually, thank you, Ms. Spomby, for your comment on that, because that's where I was going to be going with this. I, I did notice, as, as we got that next slide a little ahead of time, the, the, on the lack of, there is a slight lack of cohesion in some of the themes. I mean, I looked at Roten with the Encore, West Rocks I saw pop up with arts, PONUS, Global Studies, and then Nathan Hale, really doesn't have anything aside from the math that, that was identified there. The only reason I, I bring this up is we talk a lot about choice, and I, I'm a big fan of choice. But if you're a student at this school, you have this as your area of focus. I'm not sure that it's, from what I can see, a true choice for the student and/or the parent. So, I'm just kind of curious as to what the benefit of some of these are. I mean, I get Encore's ability to help with the achievement gap, but if, if that's true, why aren't we implementing that across the board? And then, why, why is exactly the consistency? And then, you know, we have the arts theme and the, the Global Studies theme.
We're not doing it because it's too much change.
Right, no, and I, I understand that.
And too much, and too much expense at the outcome.
So, and, and that's, I appreciate that, and I, and that's a valid question, and an answer that I, it's good to hear. So, I guess just, Global Studies and art, the enhancement's there, and we're not there yet. So, I'm, you know, there's a lack of anything artistic, or more of the, you know, non-mathematical science-based mindset at Nathan Hale, as where we have some other schools that will be implementing a little bit more of arts enrichment, and, you know, more of that creative thinking.
I think to some degree, this already exists. So, for example, when asked to identify its strengths, West Rocks identified its programs in the arts. Okay? So, you know, that may exist already, and so, you have a school wanting to build on its strengths. You know, what is the logical conclusion of this five years from now? You know, it may be that you, as a board, allow parents to opt into schools that are not in their feeder pattern because of a particular interest a child has. If they're interested in Chinese, and it's only being taught at, at Roten, or if they're interested in some aspect of the arts, where West Rocks is so much stronger. This is an interesting policy question for the board. You know, the, the question really is, do you have one size fits all, and make it the one best system? And we, we work on that. Or do you have some variation based upon school governance at, at each school, that allows the schools to develop in different directions? Where our responsibility as a district is, is around the area of student achievement. So, we cannot allow things to happen, or continue to happen, that where, where, that produce a low level of achievement. But when schools are doing well, you know, perhaps they should have the ability to evolve in different ways.
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski. And I, and that really does kind of lead up to my final point on that, which was, as a part of the middle school redesign and having that as a focus, I'm just curious about it, because we are ultimately trying to solidify the achievement. And I think that, in, from what I've seen on all the slides, there is a core being focused on, on overall education. And then, you have these ancillary extras on some of the other schools. So, I'm just, I'm curious about the benefit of adding those into the middle school redesign, and having them even be a focus, where the school governance councils, as they strengthen and improve, essentially would be able to do those exact things, and be able to help guide those in the future, so.
Yeah, with the exception of the Chinese, I'm not sure, and, and of course, PONUS already has Japanese, and, you know, the other schools do not. With those two exceptions, I'm not sure that there's anything else added. As I mentioned, the West Rocks is, their, their view is that they're offering more in the arts now than, than others. But again, this is more a theoretical question for the, for the future. And it does have a relationship to the Encore, because quite often, if you were concentrating in a particular area, you would have more Encore offerings in, in that area.
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski.
Okay.
Okay. So, our last two schools, PONUS Ridge Middle School and West Rocks Middle School, pretty much covered everything in regards to some of the specific design elements that will be implemented, the interdisciplinary teams, verticals, student cohorts, flexible schedule. Dr. Lewis and his team was able to identify the Global Studies theme, the integration of the structural supports, as well as structured common plan in time. And then also, Dr. Lewis is exploring, how can he deepen the structure of team teaching at his school? And traditionally, we're not talking about team teaching in the context of, you know, a math teacher, team teaching with a science teacher, but a math teacher might be, team teach with a social studies teacher, or an English language arts teacher might team teach with a, a teacher outside of a specific content area. And use that common plan in time to be able to look at how to be able to lesson design around specific focuses that they may be looking at or exploring within their content area. So, Dr. Lewis is exploring that, on how he could be able to deepen that structure, and also, the Center for Secondary School Redesign will be providing that support as well to PONUS Ridge Middle School. And then, West Rocks, finally, Dr. Moore has decided to implement a modified block, which she will only go extended learning time in grade six. She has expressed the desire to expand upon her arts theme that she has there. She feels very passionate about that. Structural supports in Read 180, Systems 44, and Math 180, and also looking at how to be able to deepen her structured common plan in time with her teachers.
Okay. Yes, Heidi?
In regards, Dr. Connor, to West Rocks, as far as the modified block, I know we're looking at 80 to 90 minutes, so can you explain as far as the modified block?
Yes, absolutely. So, Dr. Moore has decided to implement only the extended learning time between 80 to 90-minute block in grade six. Her seventh and eighth grade will operate on a 45-minute schedule.
So, you see, I think you see at West Rocks the least amount of change or progress toward, you know, these, these models, but nonetheless, you've got something started.
Okay. Eric?
Thank you, Chairman. So, Dr. Connors, Dr. Adamowski, so to my understanding, the other schools are moving to a six-through-eight model block schedule?
Not in all cases.
Right. Okay. So, the, the only, so besides West Rocks, what schools are not implementing full block scheduling across the board? Or what does each school look like in their implementation?
Well, for example, at, at Nathan Hale, the sixth grade, and this is primarily due to the Teach to One program, has to be scheduled differently in order to accommodate that. But that kind of change is not as great in, in the seventh and eighth grade, correct?
Correct. Okay, but then with PONUS and Roten, are they block scheduling six through eight?
PONUS, Roten has done that for, or something close to that, something similar to that for years, given its, given its size. However, the universal factor across all three schools, which I think, you know, we can accomplish, is that at least in the sixth grade, in every school, there will be 90 minutes of math and 90 minutes of reading. And then, the intent is to, in those cases where, where that's not being embraced currently, is to be able to move that model up as the cohort of students moves to seventh and to eighth. And that kind of gives us the three-year And that kind of gives us the three-year structure of this, or the three-year timeline of this.
It's following this entering sixth-grade class and watching its development throughout the, to its progression and promotion through the eighth grade.
Correct.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That does, any other questions for Dr. Connor on the middle school redesign while we got them?
I just want to appreciate you answering all my questions and all the hard work that, you know, you've done on this along with the people that have put input into this, and I'll be interested to see it moving forward and its implementation.
Yes?
Just one last question. Dr. Connor, can you tell me where, I know you elaborated briefly, but where we are in the training of all of our staff?
Absolutely. So our principals have received two trainings on Read 180, and then that's the rigor and relevance domain on it. So even though they're receiving training on the systems, they're coupling the training in regards to how to be able to provide instructional leadership to support tier-one instruction, as well as the necessary tier-two and tier-three instructions that teachers will be employing. Also, principals will be receiving math solutions training, and that's, again, it's aligned or married to the Read 180 training, but with a focus on tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three. So they received their first professional learning workshop last Friday. They will be receiving their second workshop this Friday as well. The Center for Secondary School Redesign has provided teacher leader, as well as team leaders, training. Today was actually the first day that they received that training. Tomorrow, they'll receive a half-a-day training as well. And then also, roughly last, I believe it was last week, the Center for Secondary School Redesign went to each school and provided, just kind of exploring the landscape and collecting the data in regards to what are the necessary needs, and then having a teacher that actually made this transition to the block to provide support, as well as answer any additional questions with that. We're looking at exploring what we can utilize for summer, for summer training as well, and then also our instructional leaders providing intense training from the Center for Secondary School Redesign as well, and then providing job-embedded coaching, as well as also ancillary professional learning for teachers, as well as administrators moving forward into the 16, 17 academic year.
One other.
Yeah, please.
When we were up, Eric, just to your point, you were talking more about the Hartford Magnet Program, Trinity Magnet. We had suggested when we were up there, if possible, if we can have some of the teachers that have been successful in what they're doing up in Hartford, to possibly come down to Norwalk at some point and share some of their best practices, what has really worked in Hartford that we could possibly implement and be successful here.
Yes, I spoke with Sally, actually via email, last week, and she extended her full support with this. And she said, you know, starting, June is a rough month to actually come down, but she said, starting in September, we'll reconvene the conversation in July, August, and then look at September. What would that look like in the context of having our teachers actually go there, having our teachers come here during the district committee meeting? So she's more than supportive and more than willing to help us out.
Okay. If we could know as a board, and letting Mary know, as well as the teacher union president, just to get all of us on board on that. I think sharing those practices, I think, would be helpful, whether they went there or they came here.
Absolutely.
I think just to kind of ease the, kind of the unknown and the change might be helpful.
Absolutely.
Shirley and then Arty.
I'm listening to everything, and I hear that we have all these plans, and I'm going back to public comments and some, because, you know, there are some concerns about this middle school redesign, and I want to know, what are we doing, or whoever is in charge of this, to try to reach out to the individuals that have concerns, to try to sit there and talk to them? For example, the teachers, president of the teacher union, and, because they're, it's their teachers we're talking, that, talking about dealing with in this situation. And I hear the cries out there, so I want to know, what are we doing to sit there and have them at the table to talk? I hear about how we've got to go in and implement this and bring that in. I'm not sure if that was ever told to any of them, but, you know, I'm just concerned with that because if we're starting this new process and programs in these schools, and you're starting off with the majority of your teachers not happy, then we have a problem right in the beginning, and that will slow down the achievement gap. So that's what I need to find out, what are we doing to get them at the table so they can sit here and feel that they have, they can be part of this, so that we can at least have, make, you know, these initiatives successful. So that's the only thing I'm looking to see, that we need to reach out and have people come in and try to work this out, so that we can make sure that all of our children are getting what they need.
I think this is going to take a while. I think it will be a combination of gaining experience and communication. And, you know, part of the charge, you may recall, of the Middle School Redesign Committee, is that once it had something to say, right, and we're just kind of at that point, at this point, that they would be holding these information sessions for parents, for staff. Beyond that, I think we're going to, once we start getting some experience, we're going to rely heavily on the school teams to decide where to go next, what to do next. You know, you have to get to a certain point where you not only have something to say, but you have some experience and you have some results to share, so that people can be informed and know, you know, what might be in the context of their own school, the next best step for them to take. This is the phenomenon, this very difficult period at the, at the beginning of any change process, where everything is theoretical, where there is no experience to reflect on. But you have to, on the basis of the research and best practice, you have to start and do something, because if you don't, you never do anything. And so I think we're very cognizant of the, of the point that you're, you're making. And I hope also that, you know, this process began in March, and a decision had to be made if we did anything for the next year, even the baby steps that you've seen tonight, or do we let a whole nother year go by? And so, you know, this has to be balanced, again, by a sense of urgency and the amount of time we need to discuss, reflect, bring people along, develop other alternatives, you know, which is that, that whole communication process.
And that, that's, that's the key right there, is that communication process in the beginning, and that's something I'm struggling with that, myself, because I feel that the communication needs to be expanded, broadened, and people need to be more involved. And that's my feeling here. I figure, as sitting here, as a board member, I feel, you know, very strongly about that, that, of course, you know, some people don't have some expertise in certain areas, but they do bring something that's special because they're familiar with the district, they're familiar with the kids, they're familiar with the community, and those are some good things to bring to the table when we're talking about putting things in place. So, I mean, in the beginning, yes, I understand you said March you started, but I'm not sure what effort was made out there to reach out, to bring people in, to help guide this along the way.
So, you know, it is possible for people to have communications, but disagree on what the outcome should be, right, or what the, what the, what the plan should be. I remember, I've heard Dr. Connor mention this, and I also heard from Mr. Sackey, there was a meeting the other night of sixth-grade parents at Nathan Hale.
Incoming sixth-grade parents.
Incoming sixth-grade parents. You know, the, this was a briefing around the sixth-grade program next year and what it would look like. Very well communicated, parents were very supportive, they had ideas. I mean, I think that's, that was just a good example for us. You know, we're just back-and-forth communication, but, you know, everybody wants the same goal, which is a higher level of achievement. And, you know, our families depend on our staff for that. They can't generate that themselves, they're not the educators, and they're not the leaders of the district. That's our responsibility, and, you know, we're not always on target, but if we don't try, we never will be.
Once you're open, do the people come in?
Heidi, then Eric.
I thought I was.
Arty was actually that.
Because I don't like you, that's why. All right, so you were up for, okay, first, Arty, then Eric, then Heidi. Okay. Arty, go.
I'm just curious, Dr. Connor, if you know what the teacher-to-student ratio was at the Hartford School?
I don't know what the ratio was.
Similar to ours.
Yeah.
Because it's a Magnet School, I just think maybe it's a little different.
No.
I think it was about the same.
Same.
And also, one thing that Ms. Biggs did, said that majority of her student population was from Hartford. She wanted to stress that, on how she was able to close the achievement gap, and also having low-income students, as well as underprivileged students, attend four-year colleges at a very alarming rate. So she did, she did articulate that, that it's just not all students from the suburbs.
The demographics of that school are similar to PONUS. It's about 60-some-odd percent free and reduced lunch, PONUS being our lowest-income school.
Okay. Eric?
Thanks, Chairman. Ms. Mosby's point did raise a question in my head. Obviously, there have been concerns. Mr. Jean Durco, Ms. Jordan, along with the members of the union that are here tonight, obviously have some concerns. I mean, I think that that has been stated over and over. As implementation begins, as we've stated clearly tonight, these are still also questions, the what-ifs. Is this really going to impact the kids? Perhaps, perhaps not. My biggest concern is, as we move forward, building back a level, a strong method for communication, if we're running into stumbling blocks, if there are issues that are arising, I want this to be successful. I do. I appreciate almost everything brought forward tonight, but as this moves forward, if there are true struggles, I don't want teachers to feel, you know, I want them to be able to come to the table and say, this is what I'm struggling with, this is what I need help with, this is how I need to get over this hill. And what is our plan to really help the teachers transition through this, and the administrators as well?
Hi.
I'm sorry, were you still?
There was a long enough pause, I thought I figured I was done, so.
At one level, you know, you're asking rhetorical question that motivates us to try to develop more in that area, but there has been some thought to this.
Yes, absolutely. So again, you know, hearing the concerns, hearing the cries around professional development, professional learning, and support, I feel that Joe and Mary could come to me anytime to be able to articulate any of the issues. I think, you know, Joe and I, about last week, at our first meeting, he expressed that, you know, the teachers needed professional development and support, and I explained to him about my transition on when, in New Haven, when one of our schools merged to become a K-8, and how the intensity of support was one that was, that made it successful. So I'm going to be on the ground, I'm going to be supporting them as well. We have integrated multiple supports from the Center for Secondary School Redesign, also our project director from the International Center for Leadership and Education in HMH. I'm just urging that we just be able to work together to try to be able to address some of the major concerns, and also, if we find some mitigating factors that is inhibiting our progress, we should be able to sit down at the table, be able to iron it out and work together, collaborate, to move, move this project forward, because again, it's about the kids.
Just to clarify that point, the team that you just mentioned, you mentioned yourself, the program manager, and this is not a district employee?
This is not a district employee.
Thank you. And who else would be a part of this?
The Center for Secondary School Redesign.
And who is that made up of?
And they are our partners, Mike Nass, Joe DiMartino, and Tony.
Those are consultants to the Middle School Redesign Committee.
So staff-wise, you were the only person?
No, our instructional specialists as well.
Okay, that's what I'm, thank you.
Now, you know, Mr. Anderson, having said that, there's not a lot of them, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, Dr. Connor has a team of two, with himself.
That's, that's my question. That's, that's my concern, honestly, because it, we have you, two staff people that are permanent to the district, and a number of temporary consultants. I think that it would behoove us to really put some thought into this piece of the project moving forward, as, you know, as concerns have been brought forward, to really be able to help you and your small staff be able to help overcome those obstacles. Because if there's just three of you, I don't want you to be put in a position where you're being spread so thin to help individuals transition and support our staff to the best of its ability to make this successful for our students. So I'm hoping that, you know, over the next, over the summer, we can have a more robust conversation around this to figure out the best way to implement this, to give that support as needed as they come up.
Ideally, we would have a coach in each school, a redesign coach in each school, that could just work on these issues at a very small grain size and level of detail with staff. You know, this is all around the how question, right? And, and how do you support people, training, experience, that, that type of thing? You know, we don't, we're not at a level of resources to be able to do that. You know, it may be that the Middle School Redesign Committee, after considering some of these baby steps, decides that that is the way to proceed, perhaps one school at a time, as opposed to in unison. Again, there's different ways to implement these things. And again, we have to find a way that is best adjusted to our level of resources and our culture, and, you know, what's our, what's our best option for, for going forward? And I think we'll know more about that as, as time goes on. We've only been into this for a few months at this point.
Thank you so much.
Heidi?
All right, I'll end it, I think. That's why I think communication is key, and communicating with Mary and Joe, keeping the dialogue of communication open, because I think what's important, I mentioned this earlier, the school in Hartford, I remember speaking to a couple of the teachers there and saying, what worked, what hasn't worked, has it taken a while? And they said, in the beginning, you know what? We were afraid. You know, it's a lot going on, a lot happening in a short period of time, but as time went on, it progressed, they felt good, they were successful, they closed the achievement gap, children, the students were happy, and it was a successful story. And that's the kind of story we want to have here in Norwalk. And I think keeping those, the line of communication open, keeping, having some of our teachers, perhaps going up to Hartford, or Hartford having them come here, talking to some of our teachers, we've got great teachers. What's been working up there? What hasn't? How long has it taken? So I think once we hear that, it'll have a positive outcome. And I think also looking at our training that we're going to have ongoing, hearing some of the feedback, like what's working, what are you concerned about, what do you think we need to tweak over time? And I think even evaluating this six months or a year from now.
Absolutely.
In all of our middle schools, just to see what's working in some schools and what isn't working, or what might be working altogether. But I think as a group, we need to come together and talk about it. I'm still part of the committee, so we'll be going, having ongoing conversations, which I think it's great to have that going, because you don't want to stop it in September, you want to keep it going, just to see and talk with the group. And that's why I think it's important having the principals meet and administrators.
Okay. What's going on with preschool?
All right, so we're going to move to preschool while Dr. Connor is catching his breath and regrouping, and I think there's a couple of other people that are going to be joining you, correct?
Yes, they will.
Who will have to bring, who will have to bring their own chairs with them. I just want to point out to the board, the, the other thing I did not mention relative to the plan is that there is expanded section, appendix, appendix A, which are the performance measures of the plan. Now, you saw these listed before, all right? These, this is, so there aren't any others, it's the same list, but in this appendix, there are other columns. So we're dealing with district performance, student achievement, the measurement of school climate, and program quality. And the, there are, as you go through that center column, you'll see that there are some specific targets that are being set that we can use as a benchmark, as to whether or not we're being successful in meeting these strategies. So I think that's very positive. It brings us into a, you know, a different realm of accountability. I would ask you, you know, prior to the adoption of the plan, to give a good look at those, because again, we're, we're going to have to be geared around doing that, and they will have to become our priorities. And you'll see in the status column, you know, where we are on those various, various areas. Okay, so preschool.
All right.
Wanted to accomplish two things tonight, and this was actually a request of the board as we were going along, and this issue was, was swirling. One is, you know, the, the issue of our achievement gap and how preschool is a factor in preventing the preparation gap from turning into the achievement gap, and why we need effective preschools. And the other, and so you'll be seeing some data on that. And the other related issue was the LE model, because we've, we've had, through our involvement in Norwalk Acts, data on preschool, which suggests the effectiveness of the model, and it's been effective in other parts of the state as well. Well, what is it? And to answer the question of... You can start us out.
Okay, hello again, board. And when we talk about the achievement gap, I think there's two core entities that we don't address, is the preparation gap and the opportunity gap. And when we think about the preparation gap, I think about environmental and structural factors that play into that. And then also, when we talk about the opportunity gap, opportunity for quality programming, which is more of a structural factor behind that. So when we look at the achievement gap, we have to look at what the root cause is of it, and that's directly the preparation gap, as well as the opportunity gap. What is the preparation gap and the opportunity gap? This is some research that has been conducted over the last fifteen years. By age two, and if we look at our demographics, we're at fifty percent free and reduced rate, but moreover, fifty-seven percent for high needs, that qualify for the high need subgroup. So when we look at age two, children from low-income families are six months behind their high-income peers in regards to language proficiency. Then we start seeing that trajectory exacerbate itself. By age three, children from low-income backgrounds know five hundred words, while children from high-income backgrounds know two thousand, two thousand words. So Hart and Reasley, they conducted this study in regards to the vocabulary gap. And one of the rationales to students from low-income houses, or low-income families by age three knowing five hundred words versus two thousand words, is contextualized as students from low-income homes, they only speak in more in a context of directives, okay? But students from high-income families have more of a conversation. So now we start seeing the preparation gap exacerbate itself within the environmental factors. And then now we see the achievement gap by age five. When students formally matriculate into formal schooling, they are more than two years below their high-income peers in regards to standardized language development assessments. So that's the DIBELS assessment, the DRA assessment that was administered, benchmark assessments, but now we're looking at the DIBELS assessment as well. So now you see the trajectory of how the preparation gap and opportunity gap leads to the achievement gap. Progressive Policy Institute, this is a quote that resonates with me. Says, "Recent research demonstrates that young children are capable of learning far more complex skills and ideas previously believed, and developing pre-academic skills to help them later in school." So now we talk about the sustainable effects. We have that focus on literacy, language development, starting at an early onset, and then moving into supporting that later as they go into more of their formal school. So now you see the sustainable effects, as well as those skills lasting over a period of time. The Connecticut Education Reform Policy Report, this is the recommendations to close the opportunity gap, okay? This is where we're looking at our structural systems that we have here. Accountability, high expectations, fostering leadership, excellent teaching, invest intelligently, and then turn around schools. This report speaks, or it mirrors, our strategic operating plan, when you think about it. Our strategic operating plan is aligned to close the achievement gap, as well as the opportunity gap, that we're seeing within Norwalk public schools. And just these principles that were outlined in this education reform policy report supports why we're doing this within our work. The data that Dr. Adamowski had iterated was from the report from the Norwalk Acts in March of 2015. And from that, we saw that fifty-seven percent of Norwalk children were prepared for kindergarten in the fall of 2014, based off of the kindergarten readiness inventory. And this inventory examines the whole child with an actual rating that's provided by the teachers. However, to couple that, twenty-eight percent of Norwalk children were prepared for kindergarten in the fall of 2014, using the DIBELS universal screen. Very two stark, different assessments. One that is in the context of looking at the whole child, social-emotional component, as well as a baseline of literacy embedded in there, that's provided with a rating. However, the DIBELS is really focused on those core subset skills that's embedded within that assessment. And then we see the achievement gap happening by age, by grade three. Forty-six percent of Norwalk students in grade three were reading at or above goal on the DIBELS universal screen. Now, based off of this national data, as well as state data, this is where the inception of the PELI assessment, the Preschool Early Literacy Indicator, which coherently aligns to the DIBELS assessment, and then the DIBELS assessment coherently aligned to the NWA Assessment Management System. So in October, when I presented our assessment plan, that's where you see the alignment and the coherence of the actual assessments, the assessment management systems that we are implementing here within the Norwalk public schools. Our data that we've showed from the composite scores, from the two LE Fox Run, excuse me, from the two LE classrooms, LE at Fox Run, as well as Steppen石ones, and the pre-K at Brookside. The major difference between all three of those sites is that the LE at Steppen石ones, they have a year-round program. That underscores what we talk about, increasing achievement through time. The Fox Run program is a school-based program, however, it doesn't carry over into the summer. So we see the importance of how time impacts achievement. We also see this data mirrored with our four and five-year-olds composite score, based off of the PELI assessment. Now, remember, the PELI assessment outlined four different subset skills. Comprehension, vocabulary, alphabet knowledge, and phonemic awareness. Those core four subset skills carries over into ensuring that students have a level of proficiency that can lead into a deeper level of comprehension with complex text that's identified, whether it be the SMARTER ballot, whether it be core curricular programs, as well as high stakes assessment or formative assessments with that. But again, the core within the actual Steppen石ones data that has the model classroom there is time, the year-round component, to be able to address those core skills. The last data set that I'm going to present, I think this is the most stark and compelling data set that we have, is that we followed the students. This is what we call a two-year trend analysis on our students. In 2013, 2014, these students, we provided pseudonyms for them, entered into the actual Steppen石ones model classroom. In 2014, 2015, those students took the DIBELS assessment in kindergarten. As you can see, the stark difference, want to highlight that these students right here, this is the actual targeted benchmark for the end-of-the-year spring assessment, is 119. These students that participated in the LE program have shown, demonstrated substantial composite scores in comparison to the benchmark. Out of that cohort, only two students, I apologize, three students did not meet the benchmark. However, when we look at the scores of 247 versus 120, 119, their points above actual benchmark is substantial. In kindergarten, the average was thirty-one point nine points above benchmark. By grade two, excuse me, by grade one, in fifteen, sixteen academic year, we see those sustainable effects continue. As an example, Student A was at 386. The EOI benchmark for that end of the year was 155. So they, that student scored 231 points above that actual grade level. What does that translate into? Translate into two and two and a half years of their grade level, of being over their actual grade level. So what does that mean? If we look at, or continue this trajectory, by grade three, these students that are scoring significantly above the benchmark will score either four, will score four on the SMARTER Balance Assessment Administration when they enter grade three, if that trajectory continues the way it is.
Dr. Connor?
Yes.
What about the three children who did not meet benchmark? Are there some type of intervention, something put in?
Absolutely, absolutely. Tier two intervention supports, what we talked about with this station rotation, the instructional routines and guides, and really have that progress monitoring focus on that.
You know, back up to the fact that what we started with, which was the Norwalk Acts finding, that was it forty-seven percent of our students were not ready for kindergarten, which means they were below the benchmark. And think about that, that's almost half of our children. And we're almost at a universal point in preschool in our city. So ninety percent of our students attend preschool. Forty-seven percent are ready for kindergarten. I think that's the red flag that has coalesced the early childhood can of Norwalk Acts around the use of PELI, and without, and around the pursuit of preschool models that are effective in building early literacy, so that the preparation gap does not turn into the achievement gap.
Are there Brookside numbers to compare?
Yes, if you go back to the two slides, you'll see.
Right here with the children that are being monitored, because Brookside, we have fifth graders that we have.
No, this slide shows only the.
The students that entered into the PELI.
Right, but if you go, could you go back to the slides with, have the Brookside comparison? Okay, do you want us to review that, or can you see?
No, I can see, and I would also like to see some of the children who are in our classrooms also be looked at from when they started PELI to where they are now.
Eric?
Mr. Chair, point of procedure, if there are going to be comments from the audience, is it proper to have them identified?
Well, technically, audience members are not supposed to be commenting after the public comment section, as in.
In this specific instance, I'm not, I don't know who you are, for instance, so I would appreciate knowing who you are.
I'm Jen Calorossi, I'm one of the preschool teachers at Brookside.
Thank you, Ms. Calorossi.
Okay.
Continue?
Okay.
So.
Can we, could you introduce our guests, Michael?
I apologize, I have Ms. Rhonda Keese, who's the executive director for Steppen石ones Museum, and then I have Dr. Margie Gillis, who is here from Literacy How.
Thank you so much for.
Thanks, thank you both for joining us.
Thank you for inviting us to come, and.
This is Margie.
I'm Margie.
Hi.
Hi, Rhonda.
Hi, Rhonda.
CEO of Steppen石ones.
Hello.
So we're going to preface just introducing LE to the board and explaining a little bit more about LE by introducing this slide from the Early Childhood Education in Connecticut report that CONCAN released at the end of 2015, looking at what is a quality early childhood program, and what does that mean? And these guiding principles for early childhood education were included in that report. So diverse delivery and parent choice, equity, quality, learning, family engagement support, continuous improvement in innovation, and continuum of learning and development. And I think that the fact that LE was included in this report as a provider profile, one of only four programs in Connecticut that was looked at, and called out as exemplifying these principles.
Sure.
So. Thanks. There. And we extracted this table from the, from the report that looks at two model programs, one in New Jersey, the Abbott Pre-K Program, and the other in Boston. Both exemplary programs.
Excuse me? What page is that on? I'm so sorry, I can't read the thing, I'd like to be able to.
You bet. That is on page, one second. Hold on, thought I had it tabbed here.
Thirty-nine.
Did you find it?
Page thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Is that the number up there? It's on there, I just.
There we go. Got it.
On page thirty-nine.
Thank you so much.
Of the report, which, which can be downloaded by going to CONCAN, for those who don't have access to it. But the table basically shows the elements that both the Abbott Program and Boston, which really closed the achievement gap in both, both instances in preschool, and called out specifically these elements, teachers having BAs and training, teachers having comparable pay, adult-child ratio, number of hours per day in the program, high-quality curriculum, ongoing professional development, use of data to inform instructional changes, school-based settings. So really calling those things out, and looking at the right-hand column where Connecticut programs were compared to these exemplary preschool programs, in the aggregate, saying that in general, Connecticut certainly put a check mark in some of those elements, but in most, not, not the case.
Okay. So, sorry, nothing happened here to the font, I apologize for that. If you turn to page fifteen in the report, that is actually the profile for the LE. And this, as we mentioned earlier, this was the 2015 report that came out less than a year ago. So we've got a quote here, just, we were very honored to be profiled in the report, and we're very pleased to be able to talk with you at our program tonight. So LE stands for the Early Language and Literacy Initiative. That's the foundation, that's the core of this work. The program itself, or the approach, the LE approach is evidence-based, it is intentionally designed to create playful learning experiences for young children ages three to five, and soon, we're going to be working with the infant and toddler population as well. These environments, they infuse language and learning with STEAM content, so science, technology, engineering, art, and now. So, the legs not great in here, but I wanted to make sure that we could call out some of the distinctive features of an LE, the LE approach. So LE classrooms, model classrooms, the lab school, they are very appealing, child-centered, they're child-powered, and safe. The images that we have up here show an example of a theme, we always start out the year with a big idea, around adaptation. So very sophisticated content. We are able to then explore different topics and themes through that big idea. So what you see right here is an exploration of tropical rainforest, and the, these, the LE classroom then becomes our teacher's greatest teaching tool. And the children are part of building their environment, they're part of planning it out, they're part of researching their environment, and they're part of actually creating different components. On the right-hand side, on the right-hand photograph, you're seeing an example of a big idea around communication, and this is actually the, an international space center, so they're learning how we communicate in space. Our learning units are based on multidisciplinary topics and themes. I heard a lot in the earlier presentation about how important exploration and discovery is, and choice, that's all taking place with our youngest students here. You see a lot of visible vocabulary and content-rich teaching and learning occurring. You see different labels that the children have actually created themselves as readers and writers entering the program. And you see a lot of interaction, a lot of engagement within skill-building, 21st century skill-building, such as cooperation and creativity and critical thinking. Extensive and inventive spelling and writing can be seen every day, every single day. So what you're looking at right here on the left-hand side is an activity around communication, is they're actually planning out the formatting of a newsletter that they produced. And so you see them planning what those steps are going to be for that newsletter, together as a team, they're planning what's going into the newsletter. And then over here on the right side, we're back at the rainforest environment, and you see that they're actually labeling directions, they're, the children really own this classroom environment, it belongs to them. Within every one of these activities, we embed language and literacy objectives, we embed content objectives, as well as we embed the.
Connecticut L standards.
The L standards. And we also have many other measurements that we're. embed content objectives, as well as we embed the-
Connecticut L standards.
The L standards. And we also have many other measurements that we're intentionally planning with every day. Our teaching, we do not have a curriculum in LE, our teachers actually build that curriculum. I should say, we do have a curriculum, we do not have an off-the-shelf curriculum. The intentional evolving playful learning experiences practices, you can see that we have some budding research scientists and paleontologists, and the paleontologist in the top photo, we have an astronaut who actually just designed his space suit so that he could enter the International Space Center, and then on the right we have paleontologists as well. Another feature of the program, teacher-student and student-student interaction, so you see that a child and their teacher is actually reviewing a newspaper, this is part of the communication unit that we had talked about earlier, and you see two young students having a grand old-time reading to each other. Complex language and verbal reasoning and skill development, Margie, if you would like to make a few comments here?
Well, as we called out language and literacy as the core principles, and embedding those core foundational skills within a multidisciplinary and interdisciplinary curriculum, we really are able to facilitate very complex language interactions between the children and between the children and the teachers, and we believe that we're facilitating and nurturing 21st century skills that are so very important, the collaboration that we see among children, the problem-solving skills that happen, and just the development of their language and reasoning in this active and complex environment.
So, in the bottom photograph, these two young students are actually building a suspension bridge.
Hard to see this one, but we took that grid, or the table that we showed you earlier, and we just called out again the elements that were mentioned in this report, that all of our teachers have the credentials, the specialized training, competitive salaries, making sure that we have a one-to-six ratio, so that we can really facilitate these activities and language exchanges and learning opportunities. Six hours a day of preschool programming, although we mentioned that the lab school has an extended day, an extended year, evidence-based program, so we're really, we have a pretty serious research agenda, so the research really informs the development of this program, or this approach, I should say. The lab school will always be the place where we will be able to explore further our research questions about what are the optimum learning environments for children, and then when we are able to answer those questions with data that tells us what we need to do next, we will take those learnings and incorporate those into the model classroom. Being able to really have data that allows us to do that is very, very important to us. That's really the highlight points.
Were those pictures Butler Ave, or?
These were mainly at Steppenstone's.
Okay. What does, haven't seen it, what does Fox Run look like?
It has the same types of components, they're very immersive experiences that are being transformed throughout the course of years, so there are no set centers that stay the same, they actually are part of the learning units, and they transform.
Okay, now, did I read this right, on page thirty-nine, this is forty-five hundred dollars for a half-day? That's, is that five days?
That's Connecticut.
That's the target?
That's what Connecticut currently is spending.
That was a comparison with New Jersey.
With New Jersey.
Okay, so that's five days, half-day, right?
Right.
So, that cost under this model for the district would be about nine million dollars, right?
I-
I mean, if we were to do universal pre-K, I'm sorry.
There are a lot of variables in that, so right now, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what we're doing.
I know what you're asking, Brian, if we try to expand it under the current model, our budget, it would be a significant hit, yes.
I don't need to give you a leading question, I mean, it's pretty obvious, right, like, universal pre-K should be the goal for the district?
Correct.
Okay, right.
Quality program.
So, to expand that across every school.
If we were to expand the current model, every school, our budget wouldn't be able to sustain that.
Right, right, as it were, just with this wonderful program, I think we're looking at nine million dollars, and I calculated, under current models, it would be fifteen million dollars, current.
I would ask, I would ask.
If we had the space.
Assuming we had all the buildings.
Assuming we had all the buildings.
I'm not even getting into their operational costs, so this looks like a cost-effective model, again, it's a leading question.
Correct, correct, cost-effective, sustainable, and strategy, and also, our main goal is to be able to close the preparation gap and close the achievement gap simultaneously.
Okay, wonderful, thanks.
Eric.
I'm sorry.
My turn this time? Thank you.
Heidi. I insist.
And Eric.
Question, I know you had mentioned, Margie, associates, bachelors, and masters, so the associate's degree assistant teachers, are they regular teachers in the class?
It varies, it varies. The lead teachers all have, you know, advanced degrees, and then it varies from teacher to teacher.
And you have ongoing training?
Yes, that's one of the qualities that was called out, and there's a lot of support, a lot of embedded support in the classroom, and then outside of the classroom as well.
And how often is the training for teachers?
It's very often, I mean, they have a lot of collaborative time with one another, far more than most programs give teachers time for, but beyond that, they have, like I said, coaching support in and outside of the classroom, on a weekly basis.
Just to add to that, our teachers, the lead teachers, first of all, we plan as teams, regardless of, you know, which site they would be located at, they get together once a week to plan. The lead teachers have about sixty percent of their time is in the classroom, and forty percent of their time is planning. And then our other teachers, it's a seventy percent time in the classroom, thirty planning.
Thank you.
Eric.
So, thank you very much for your presentation, I'm not sure who's going to answer this question, but I feel it might be a little bit sensitive, so here it goes. What is the difference, that you would say, in the strengths that you have over the current model that exists at Brookside?
I think they can speak to their model, which has been successful.
And the reason I ask that question is, I mean, it's-
I'm not sure either of you have-
Not them necessarily, and that's why I think they've spoken to their strengths, I guess just-
I mean, I think the strength of this is it's an organized, research-based model. I don't know, how would you?
Well, we are, you know, we're, you asked the question earlier about professional development, so one of the programs that we designed is the LE TeachNet, and the intention of the LE TeachNet is to convene teachers, early childhood teachers, to learn from one another, and to strengthen our programs, all of our programs. So, we're very fortunate to have Brookside teachers in that cohort, but as far as really understanding their program, we haven't spent very much time, and wouldn't really be, it wouldn't be appropriate.
So, I think there are many strengths of the Brookside model as well, right? I think what we are looking at, and there are other providers, you know, to place this in context, we only have school readiness slots for four classes. The majority of the school readiness slots in Norwalk are, these are students that are served by private providers, and previous to this next year, the Norwalk Housing Authority, and formerly NEON before them, the vast majority of slots are with the Housing Authority and with NEON. You know, we have very limited space in our schools, we have four schools that can, you know, have a classroom for preschool. So, when we deal with that issue, obviously, we're compelled, given our strategic operating plan, our goal of closing the achievement gap, of preventing the preparation gap from turning into one, to try to work with the most effective model in doing that, in terms of replication. Now, this goes back to the history of LE in Norwalk, because in 2014, my predecessor, Emmanuel Rivera, working with Norwalk Acts and with the assistance of the Grossman Family Foundation, established the demonstration site at Fox Run. The demonstration site has been operating for two years now, it's had very good results, not quite as good as the museum program, which is year-round, but very good results, and based upon our PELI assessment, better results than any other operator than within this panoply of school readiness slots spread throughout Norwalk. This was done at the time, I understand that the original intention was preschool and kindergarten. At the time, due to the objections of the union, the kindergarten part was dropped, but it was clearly the understanding and the expectation that, once the district got some experience through the demonstration site, that as opportunities arose, it would be replicated in other sites, so that more children would have the most effective model. That's not to say these models don't have other strengths, it's not to say that parents shouldn't have choices, but it is to say that the limited space we have available, as it becomes available, and again, realize that the economic model for this requires someone other than us to run it, because there is no district in Fairfield County that can afford to use union-rate teachers in its preschools. The basic funding model, the school readiness grant, will not support that. And so, for example, if you look at Stanford, Stanford has a private nonprofit agency, it has a single one, that runs all of the preschools in all of its schools, and the district attempts to work with them as a partner in order to mirror and align with its curriculum and so on. You can go to all of our districts in Fairfield County, you'll see basically the same economic model in place, because it's just the nature of how we fund preschool, and, but, you know, this is not about anybody doing anything wrong, it's not about comparison, it's simply about an effort supported by research to, at any given time, provide the most effective programs, particularly to low-income children that are susceptible to having a preparation gap become an achievement gap.
Thank you, Dr. Adamowski, and, actually, I'm sorry, you go right ahead.
I'm just curious as to who is going to be responsible for paying the tuition for them to attend, because I'm assuming that the board's not going to take that responsibility on.
So, we're going to have, at some point, once Mr., once Tom Hamilton has this all figured out, and he can relay it to the Finance Committee, we're going to have a little mini workshop for the board on preschool funding. We have three different models, and we have three different funding mechanisms. You have, I'm sure, you have never discussed this or reviewed it.
No.
And I don't, I think there are very few people in the district that even understand it after ten years of practice, so no one has gotten into this in ten years, right? So, we're trying to do everything in one year that didn't happen in the last ten, so this is on our agenda. But there's three different models, you have, you know, we've talked about the inclusive preschools, which are basically special education programs that enroll a certain number of typical students, in order to enhance the environment of the students with special education needs, so that's one model. We have another model in terms of what you've, what we've talked about tonight, which is basically a partnership model, which is how most preschools in Fairfield County operate. That has another funding model, right? So, inherent in this funding model, and, you know, everything that the Housing Authority does, and our other private operators does, it operates primarily off the state school readiness grant, and so, one of the objectives of Governor Malloy over the last eight years was to increase these until you could get to a universal level of preschool, where a parent who wanted preschool would have the support. It is a subsidy to the parent, not to the school district, and so, the parent, based upon a sliding scale of income, will qualify for a certain amount of money from the state that supplements the tuition. The tuition is set at a certain level, the parent who has almost no money might pay five dollars a week, and a parent with means might pay fifty-five dollars a week, okay? But they all pay, and they're supplemented by the school readiness grant. That amount of money forms the basic foundation of funds to operate a preschool program. And so, you know, we'll get into this with you in some detail, once the educators here understand it. We've also had something called Kids, Inc., which is something we think, that I think we need to discontinue, it's basically been a place where some of the parent fees on the special ed classes would go from the typical students, there are issues over how you collect these funds, and, you know, what you do with cash receipts versus other ways this can be charged in terms of how the parent pays, there are lots of financial issues here. So, the other side of this coin is how do you have a program, as Dr. Connor said, that's sustainable, right, that you can operate somewhere within the realm of the basic money that is coming into the district through the school readiness grants for this purpose? And we need to gain a greater understanding of it, our staff does, I do, our staff does, as I said, Mr. Hamilton is working on that, and I think the board needs at least a basic understanding of how it works.
Eric.
Thank you, Chairman. I actually wanted to thank you, Dr. Adamowski, for bringing that up, it's something I would greatly appreciate, this has become more of a public issue for us here on the board, a bit of a deer in headlights as far as the funding and the all the mechanics, so I appreciate our foresight into that. I do want to state, I absolutely love your program, everything I've read about it, everything I've seen, everything I've come across is wonderful, it is a truly fantastic program. So, with that being said, I have a question, I think this is going to go back to you, Dr. Adamowski, or Dr. Connor, are the students that will be going into LE, Norwalk Public School students?
Yeah, so, let's talk about students for a minute, because one of the criticisms that, and one of the findings of the Norwalk Acts can, has been that we have not had good transition between preschool and kindergarten, okay? And we need to improve in that area. So, one of the reasons, I believe the primary reason why we have not, is that prior to this coming school year, where we're making changes in this, all the preschools enroll anybody from all over the city, okay? And so, for example, in the Brookside kindergarten, we have children who are not in the Brookside attendance area. The Housing Authority, you would think, you know, people think as a stereotype, they're primarily serving Housing Authority residents, not so, they're serving residents from all over the city. So, we've had this, kind of this helter-skelter registration process, where anyone can go anywhere and register. For our purposes as a school district, and again, to prevent the preparation gap from turning into the achievement gap, we want any preschool housed in our building to be populated by students who will be attending kindergarten in that school, okay? So, for example, next year, at the preschools that would operate in our buildings, the enrollment is limited to children in that attendance area, and then the school knows, these are my next year's kindergartners, right? I want this to go well, I'm going to work with the partner, we're going to transition these children into kindergarten, and it's easy to do so, because they're right there, and you're right there, right? And they're not somewhere else in another building, or they're not spread out over fifteen different places. There is so much for us to do in this area, you know, I think as we look at this early childhood education, preschool education in general in Norwalk- in Norwalk, you know, we have, we've fallen behind other places. And, you know, some of it just revolves around, you know, this whole situation with NEON and the Housing Authority and others not stepping up, and the school district not having a plan. There's a lot we have to do here.
And the second part of the question, and Dr. Adamowski actually did touch on it, is, you know, the collaboration. You know, I believe we have an early education specialist, I'm not, I'm still learning, so I apologize.
Specialist, yes.
Thank you. So, is there going to be some collaboration between them, the LE program, and the administrators in the schools to help build upon that matriculation, to build it into this?
Yeah, I think that's going on now.
So, the special, the early childhood specialist is working in partnership and going over curriculum and just making sure that it's in line with where it's going?
Program planning, for sure, right?
Right, right. Okay, and program planning?
We've been meeting every week for the past month.
And then, we're also going to assign that individual to the center, right? So, again, two types of preschool, you know, the special education preschool and the center. And then, we only have four other classes. Again, we have a miniscule amount compared to the other providers. So, it will be our four other classes plus the six classes that are in the center. So, 10 classes.
And one early childhood administrator over all of them?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, Artie, I had put Artie in the list first, so it'll be Artie and then Shirley.
I'll sit back.
Yes, and just for comparison, that's about, you know, 10 classrooms, that's about half the size of a small elementary school. So, that's a very good reason.
Thank you. Artie?
Thank you. I may have missed something, because you made a statement, you said LE is not a curriculum and the teachers create it as they go. In 25 words or less, what is LE? What am I missing?
I'll take a stab, and you build on it. So, it has a curriculum that is created by the teachers. So, many preschool programs select a curriculum or a program that delivers the content and is aligned to a set of standards.
Is it arbitrary? Is it up to the teacher?
Most of those decisions are made by administrators in preschool programs, not by the teacher, per se. And so, before we started LE in December of 2013, we looked at what was currently available in terms of curriculum for preschool. And we did that because we wanted to make sure we did the very, used the very best, based on research and evidence. And we didn't find anything that captured our objectives, really, for providing this quality programming for children. And so, we decided that the best thing would be to create a curriculum that could evolve, that would be ever-changing, based on our findings, because nothing should ever be set in stone in education. And when you have a program that dictates what you're going to do, which is often what we do in education, it limits what you can offer for children, and it limits, you know, what others might be able to teach you and what the research is teaching you. So, we have a curriculum, and that curriculum is something that was created very collaboratively with input from the research, with input from experts, and with the teachers. And then, as we presented it to the children, we watched what happened with them and how that learning was taking place. And that's really, I think, at the heart of this, is studying what works best for children. How do children learn best? What are those environments, what do they look like? And it's going to change all the time, which I think is what makes this hard to understand. What I would say to you and to everyone is, come and visit, because that's really where you're going to see LE and understand it better.
Is LE independent of the provider, or is it based on the provider? Can anybody do LE?
We'd like to think that anybody could eventually, but no, it's, I don't think anyone can do it, because it takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot, a deep understanding of what the research is saying about, you know, how children learn. Having said that, certainly, the model classroom at Fox Run is a bona fide LE classroom. But as I mentioned before, the lab school is where we're testing out the theories of how young children learn best, and taking the most current research, not just ours, but research from around, you know, the world, if that's what it takes, to make sure that we're doing the best we can for children. And so, the lab school will really be our laboratory for exploring what's working and what's not. And then, when we know it's working, then that's when we'll take it into the next iteration and that next model classroom. I don't know if you want to say anymore.
Well, I think we've said consistently as well that it's an experiential model, it's an experimental approach that is, evolves based on what we learn about each child as well. So, it's not a one-size-fits-all. You know, there are different approaches, different pedagogy that we introduce, depending on the learning that's actually taking place every day.
I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think Mr. Kusimis is asking about the approach to early literacy, right? Why do students do better in early literacy? What do you do?
I think, again, taking the learnings from the research on what, you know, what is really important for children to be successful in school. And it's a complicated question that includes many, many things. But if we're looking at literacy, you know, as one of the primary things, that we're looking to make sure our children can read proficiently, one is they have to have good language skills, and that's the precursor to learning to read. So, that's why that foundation in language is so critically important. Before you even understand that these words mean something, your way of learning and thinking and growing as a child is all done through your language interactions. And we've seen that in the classroom, where our teachers are learning how to make sure that children are engaged so that their language skills continue to grow and develop. Their vocabulary is off the charts. What children can learn in terms of vocabulary and conceptual knowledge is just off the charts if we have these high expectations and expose them to complex ideas that, I think, for some people, we think, oh, they can't understand that, that's too above them. We're finding that's not the case at all, that their brains are just incredibly, they're, we're wired to be able to do that and learn.
So, you mentioned earlier invented spelling. You mentioned vocabulary now. Are there any other aspects of this that you emphasize?
I think the other thing is the steam, is this, the immersive content. Like, you saw the pictures of the rainforest, and you saw the pictures of the space station. These children really believe that that's, they're there.
They work every day.
And they go, yeah, and so, this learning is very intentional, and it engages them as equals. One of the things that we've learned a lot about is through Vygotsky's. Most everyone's heard of the Russian psychologist, who talked about the zone of proximal development, and making sure that we work within that zone so that we can take children to the next step, you know? And we're stretching them, but not pushing them. There's a difference. Likewise, we talked, he talked about the more knowledgeable other. In most classrooms, the teacher is the more knowledgeable other. There's only one. In LE classrooms, the children can be the more knowledgeable others, because they learn from one another. And when you teach somebody else, whether you're four or 44, you learn what you're teaching. So, we've learned so much about engagement and playful learning. So, those are, I think, some important components.
Other questions, Kusimis?
Shirley, you're next. You're good. Heidi?
Anybody else?
I'll go after you.
Can you, it's a six-hour day, correct, plus an extended day?
What are the hours? Can you refresh my memory? I'm not sure if you said what the hours are for the six-hour day.
The six-hour day at Fox Run?
Fox Run.
Is, I think, 8:30 to 2:30 roughly. Yeah.
Okay, and then, the extended day is 3 to?
At the lab school, the children can be dropped off as early as, what, 7, 7:30? And then, they can stay as late as 6 o'clock.
Okay. If I were to come in one day and just observe?
We'd love, love that.
Which I will.
Yes, please.
But could you walk me through just a couple of hours? You know, a child coming in, several children coming in in the morning, just kind of walk me through an idea of what their day is like?
Sure. Well, LE has its own language, too, so bear with me on this. When a child is first dropped off, they have time to sort of orient themselves, so they'll begin by signing in, and they will actually sign in themselves. They go and drop off their coats and all of their materials that they brought with them. They wash their hands, and they just jump right into the program.
So, it's like a free play in the beginning, when they come in?
Yes, and some of the activities that are placed are very intentional. So, it's, you know, it's not like they would just be open to everything that's in this space.
Do they have choices, like centers?
Yes, and that's a really good question. We do have different stations, but we don't have any permanent centers, per se. So, once all of the students are in the classroom, they engage in what we call the LE sphere, and that's a time to really go over what transpired the day before. It's time to talk about what is going to happen that day. There's generally a reading time that is part of that. And then, they start preparing for what we call LE adventures. And that's where they get into these types of experiences. There's an outdoor time period that also is a part of that. Every activity, we mentioned earlier that there are three objectives within each one of the activities. Every activity, then, is connected. The content is connected, so we're scaffolding the activities throughout the day. There is a lunch break, and then, there's a nap time period or a rest period.
Is that optional?
No, no, we do have a rest period. And they, I should have said that there was a snack time in the morning. And there's a snack time following the rest period, and then, there's more LE adventure, and then, there's also a reflecting time at the end of the day, where they have a chance to speak to what they learned, you know, and start, begin preparing on what's going to happen the following day.
Is it like a closing circle at the end? I mean, do the children come around and just kind of talk about?
They do, the LE sphere.
So, everything's like the LE?
That's right. We elevate in LE. Yes.
Do they speak LE language?
They, well, we all speak LE language, yes.
She's invented spelling. Team LE, which is cute to hear them talk about.
They're team LE, yeah.
Seems like a sense of thanks.
Belonging to it.
Yeah, it was no question, I just shared with the board. I had a daughter come out of the 50-50 program, Kids, just two years ago. Prepared her very well for Cranberry Elementary. Very happy about that. The billing practices and such were very questionable the whole time. I always brought those questions with me out of the board. Looking forward to working with Tom to kind of like nail this down and get all our options out there. We really need to get control of costs so we can figure out what we can do to expand these opportunities to as many children as possible, not just Brookside or a handful of places, district-wide. And just would say thanks to stepping stones and such. You're doing a great job with the museum. I'm always impressed with, as a member, not as an LE parent, even though I have two, two-and-a-half-year-olds maybe coming up there.
Soon to be.
But we're just very impressed with how you constantly keep the content in the museum fresh, and it's always like a new experience for the kids every time they go in. So, I think I can anticipate, and I appreciate that we would get more of that flavor and theme throughout the LE classroom. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Evelle, and then Shirley.
No, Evelle, you first, then Shirley.
Thank you for the information. I appreciate it very much. There was a chart on the composite scores. Could you just shed some light on how you look at disaggregated scores in terms of looking at how the program or LE, how students respond to LE beyond composite scores? Because students will have different, naturally, you know, they'll have different differential effects, and you won't know what they are unless you look at the individual scores. You don't have to get into the weeds, into the types of measures, but just tell us your process for that.
Yeah, it's a great, great question, and it's a very important question. And one of the reasons that I think we really appreciated knowing about the PELI, because it's the only assessment that I'm aware of that actually is constructed to really drive instruction. So, the composite score is really just a big picture. But if you look at the subtests within it, it looks at discrete skills that are foundational to learning to read, but it also looks at vocabulary, which is not so easy to measure, and comprehension. And again, it's a screener, so it's not meant to go deep, you know? It's really meant to find children who are at risk. But because it's designed to also be administered within, you know, between the benchmark periods for progress monitoring, it actually comes with what are called quick checks. And the teachers are encouraged to use those for the children who are not meeting benchmark to say, okay, this child, for example, fell below the benchmark on alphabet knowledge, and we know that's a strong predictor of learning to read. And so, we would say, you know, let's bring a group of four or five children together that are all showing evidence that they haven't mastered this, and we're going to work with them, and then, we're going to do a quick check to see if they responded to the instruction. So, it's really, it's really constructed to do just that, just like our GIBL is aligned to that. It's the same concept. It's a great question.
And there's support systems in place for those who stray?
Absolutely. That's best practice. I mean, we really don't do a lot of whole-class instruction. I mean, certainly in the LE sphere, when we're introducing concepts and ideas, but a lot of what's happening in the classroom is intentional, like Rhonda said, to address, whether it's interests or needs, and being able to differentiate and individualize with those different, you know, assessment results.
Thank you. Shirley?
Yeah, I'm just going back to, I know that the ultimate goal is to get the pre-K kids in the same school as the kindergarten that, you know, they will be, you know, attending. That said, we'll probably go back into the space issue at this point, because we're going to have to try to figure out how to get these kids in these schools, in our elementary schools, so that they can, you know, go through that model.
Yeah, so, this is, excuse me, this is a very big issue relative to our 10-year facilities master plan. You'll notice that in the facilities master plan for the elementary level, there is a elementary school model. And that would anticipate, over the next decade, it'll probably take us more than the next decade, it might take 20 years, that every school would be renovated or rebuilt, and that all of our new schools would have two preschool classrooms. So, for example, anything that we build, the first school that we build, let's assume we can build a school in South Norwalk or somewhere else, it will have two preschool classrooms. So, we will not have, beyond these four classes that we have now, we don't have any space. And so, we will not have any more preschool classes until we acquire more space and our enrollment at the elementary level dissipates as a result of, you're aware that the facilities plan calls for adding about 1,000 spaces, or the equivalent of 300, 400 student schools. So, right now, you know, we also have the competing pressure of needing space to bring classes, specialized classes, back into the school district, right? So, you know, I think for the future, we're probably looking at one class at Brookside as opposed to two. We're looking at one at Tracy, one at Narimac, and one at Fox Run. And that's it? We don't have any more space. And so, this will be a period, I think, to refine And so this will be a period, I think, to refine the model, work on getting the most effective preschools in place. But we will not enter the area of expansion until the facilities program starts to gain traction and we start adding space. And so ideally, I think what we are looking at is in a particular neighborhood, in a particular attendance area, students registering at the preschool level and then becoming kindergarteners, becoming first graders, second graders, and so on. And this emphasize, this creates an emphasis on why this issue of sustained effects is so important, that because you attended preschool, you're now doing better in kindergarten and first grade and, and second grade. But we are, we are ages away from this. It might be 20 years before we have schools that each have two designed preschool classrooms. But we're going to do the best we can with what we can have and when we can, when we can have it.
It would have been nice a couple of years ago when we started doing Row Aton because then we could have put that model right in there.
You're right. And so anytime, anytime we build a wing, Ms. Mosby, anytime we build a wing, and I should have mentioned that, in addition to a building or a renovation is new, we need to have that in the back of our minds and plan for this.
Yep.
All right. So we don't have anything at Kendall or Jefferson, huh?
We have, we have one, we have two, two of the inclusive preschools at Kendall that will be going to the center.
Okay.
Kendall's enrollment is such that those will be taken up by the need for regular classrooms.
You have nothing at Jefferson?
We have, we don't have preschool at Jefferson.
And, and is that the school that has the most free and reduced lunch? Is it Jefferson or is it Kendall?
I believe, I believe Pontus Ridge has the greatest number as a middle school.
As a middle school.
And I believe the highest elementary is Kendall.
I think it's Kendall.
Yeah.
So we're moving them over to?
Question for you. You know, one of the criticisms that people have made about this is that your program doesn't have NIAC certification. Why doesn't it have NIAC certification? And are you going to get NIAC certification?
We're in the process of getting NIAC certification. The LE lab school is important to note. The LE lab school is three years old and it actually started in December of 2012. And the model classroom began in November of 2014. Through school readiness, we have a three-year window to get NIAC accredited.
Okay, so you have until the end of next year to get the accreditation? And that is in process?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sorry, one more question. Can I just understand the relationship between you two? You developed LE, you teach LE. Is that the way it works? You're licensed LE? How does, I'm just understanding how this works.
We're co-creators.
Co-creators, okay.
Of LE. I am the CEO at Stepping Stones. And we have an expertise in playful learning for children ages 10 and younger. And Margie, you want to?
And, and I work with teachers and do professional development for teachers. And that's my, so I, my background is in education and in, in doing research in education.
I think this is understated a little bit.
Exactly, exactly.
Ms. Gillis is considered the mother of reading in Connecticut, right? Having led the state effort really to, to improve reading instruction and is considered the guru and working all over the state in many school districts.
Absolutely.
And formerly with the Haskins Lab before Literacy Hall, correct?
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. When you get Fox Run in.
All right. So I think it's fair to say that those, those were the two issues that generated by far the most comment during the five public sessions that we had on the, on the plan. And I appreciate all the detailed information that we were provided with. As, as we requested also, please make sure the board gets copies of all the presentations that went up here tonight.
Mike, could you make a note of that? All the slides?
All the slide decks that went up tonight, make sure they get distributed to the board. You know, I looked through the new format. Obviously, the content is pretty much the same as what we've been discussing except for, you know, some amendments particularly relating to the topics we discussed tonight.
Executive session.
Okay. I think, you know, for Eric's benefit, you know, you raised some interesting questions about, you know, well, how much variation is going to be going on like in the middle schools? And that, that is going to be a constant tension in the use of this model. That if you look at the theory of action, the managed performance empowerment, we are consciously saying we are going to allow some variation among the ways that the schools focus through their school governance councils. But then if you, if you turn to the next page after that, you have this 17 different performance measures that we're going to be using to monitor the success of all those schools. And the policy that we adopted for school governance council says, as long as you're achieving the goals that you're supposed to be hitting from all those evaluation methods which are laid out at the end, if the kids are hitting the targets that we need them to hit on, then you're pretty much have at it. Exactly. If on the other hand, somebody is choosing, you know, a model, a method, a concentration, and we see, you know, the performance of the children dropping at the school, then the policy provides for the central office to intervene and say, all right, this isn't working. You guys got to try something different. So there's going to be some constant tension there between the desire to provide autonomy to the schools and the need to hold them accountable for the results. And that's, that's built into the system. I just quickly looked through the rest of it. I mean, we don't have to go into detail because most of this, I think, the board understands and we're pretty much in agreement with. There was one, you know, if you look on page seven, there's a mention there about increasing time for K5 management, 60 minutes to 90 minutes. I had received a objection to that claiming that this was the imposition of block scheduling at the elementary schools. Is this block scheduling at elementary schools?
No, absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Is it 1B? Yeah.
I think the.
Gold 1B.
I think it has nothing to do with math either. I think the, we have, we have, we have cohort two CK3LI schools. CK3LI, again, we could do a workshop on this, okay? Because we have another acronym here like LE. CK3LI is the state literacy model. It is the gold standard for literacy instruction. Norwalk is one of the leaders in this statewide. We have, we have two, we have a cohort two, correct, Michael? That is involved this year. Next year, it'll be cohort three, which are the remaining elementary schools. CK3LI has a certain reading schedule. It is not a block schedule. The elementary schools are not going to a block schedule. But to be a CK3LI school, you have to follow the reading schedule.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions on any of the other aspects of the draft SOP that members would like to bring up?
Good job.
What I would suggest is we've all got this new version of the plan. We're going to get all of the presentations that went on tonight. I would urge board members to review those. And if you have any suggestions for changes that you'd like to see in any of the provisions of the SOP, please communicate them to the board members and so we'd be in a position to talk about them at the next meeting. Hopefully, at the, the next meeting on June 21, we'll be in a position to adopt the, the updated strategic operating plan. Obviously, there's a lot more details of the implementation process, but the plan does set our high-level goals for what we want to do.
I should just mention on page 13 on Goal 5, you'll notice there was a revision in J to deal with school lunch quality and environment. And in, in addition to that, and Mr. Barbas is not here tonight, but he's done considerable research and comparison to other school districts. We may be recommending adding another strategy there that deals with overall wellness and strengthening the role of the wellness committee as it affects both staff and, and students in our schools.
If I could just add on to that, we actually had a visit from the wellness committee tonight as part of our policy committee. And they did go over in depth what they were looking at, what they'd like to make some changes on and brought it to our policy committee to review and look at.
So Mr. Barbas has submitted some language on that that we're working on. We couldn't, the timing was such that we couldn't get it into this draft, but we're going to continue to work on that. So you'll probably anticipate a K final strategy there.
Also, we got something from the health department, didn't we?
Yes, and then you got something from the health department. This is very, very much related to this, asking to collaborate and making a suggestion. And that, that may actually be the, be the language that we would use.
I think it's implied, but mentioning something about currency of this document, like within a calendar context, like every year we meet, this becomes 17 to 20.
Moving and rolling it forward?
Yeah.
Well, I think it, I think it's supposed to be a three-year plan. I don't know if the intention is to roll it forward.
So it's 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19. Now, what is not here are the implementation steps for each year.
Right.
So each summer at your summer retreat, we would propose to you, based upon the strategies, we would propose to you a set of implementation steps for that year. Now, this gives the board a chance to review the plan and say, you know, look, what, what has changed since we did this? Something less compelling? Is something, you know, has the following need developed? You know, what should we do differently? And that's reflected in the implementation steps. The implementation steps are approved by the board every September. They are essentially the district's goals for the year, right? And that's what you hold me and the staff accountable for. And it's really the combination of accomplishing those things and meeting an adequate number of these performance measures that creates an accountability plan.
Thanks, Eina. And I think that would probably be, you know, the kind of setting where we'd be going to the kind of detail that you see in the, the middle school redesign plan.
Correct, correct.
The, you know, you can see, you know, a half a dozen places in the strategic plan that are general principles stated about what we're going to do at the middle schools, but they don't go into a fraction of the detail of what we, the presentation that we got tonight. So that's the kind of thing that we should be reviewing at our annual retreat.
Definitely.
Okay. Shirley and then Eric.
Yeah. Since we're talking about.
Oh, no. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Page 13, Goal 5, where we might put in some wellness. Tonight at the policy meeting, it came up that a lot of the, within the wellness policy that we're trying to put together, there's a lot of overlapping of our, our other policies. So, and we're going to have, Brenda and everyone's going to look at that and see what's going on. And I'm just wondering if we're going to put something in with wellness, will it be touching on those other areas as well?
Well, it will, it will, for example, the, the health department's suggestion really deals with strengthening the role of the wellness committee in order to create a wellness plan or program for the school district that answers the question of what do we do about wellness? How do we improve it? Now, that, you know, the, the actual, let's assume that you had each year at least one implementation step that dealt with that. It might actually be a recommendation, implementing a recommendation that wellness committee had made. So it's, you know, it would be a smaller grain size. It could involve changes in policy recommended by the wellness committee. And, you know, I, I hope you do get to the point where, you know, you're removing policies as well as adding them. Because again, you know, you can have so many policies that they're impossible to enforce. And we, we need a key set of the, that kind of embody the things that are, are important. You know, if you look at the recent things that the policy committee has worked on, they're all important. You know, those are the kinds of policies that we need for the future.
Eric?
Mr. Chair, per Agenda Item 6, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session to evaluate the candidates for normal public schools' principals' positions.
All right, is there a second? Is a second? All in favor? Okay, we're in executive.